Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council meeting of October the 22nd. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for providing an arrangement, calling this meeting to order. I may have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Here.
Mayor Medina.
Here. Public comments for items that are not on the agenda. Please. That are not on the agenda.
Pledge of allegiance.
Oh, oh, thank you, everybody. I was like, okay, everybody else got it but Rico. So, why don't we all rise? Let's say the pledge, and I'm going to ask Chris Gonzalez if she can lead us.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to everyone keeping me on track. Now, let's go to public comment for items that are not on the agenda.
Chris Gonzalez.
Thank you. I just had a fundraiser a couple of weeks ago for a nonprofit that I'm a part of, Cake for Kids. We are a nonprofit that makes cakes for foster children and at-risk youth, and we're in 10 counties in California. And we're trying to get awareness out in San Mateo County. So, we had a fundraiser, and so many people in this room were there, they contributed, and the fundraiser was such a great success, so I just wanted to publicly thank everybody for their support. And it's my goal this time next year to be more connected with the, all the departments in San Mateo County. So, thank you all for your support.
Thank you for your comments, Chris. Thank you for your efforts in that endeavor. Next, please.
Paul Wapinski.
Mr. Wapinski.
Good evening, thanks for letting me speak. First off, I'd like to thank our police and firefighters for keeping us safe every day. I'm opposed to the increase in the sales tax ballot measure. I received three of these flyers from the city. Whoops.
That's right.
And they say that they're for local services and street repair. But how much do these cost to send out? It seems more like they're a campaign ad than the information that should be put out there. And there's nothing else that's on the ballot that's on it, it's just Measure G. So, I kind of think that's on the verge of being unethical because it's not, I think it's something that shouldn't, we shouldn't have spent public money to send this out. It should be clear on the ballot. It also says that it'll raise approximately $4 million, but according to the city's information on the website, that's all, we need 16 to 20 to be at 80 percent. So, it's really not going to help out. Also, what's the backup plan if it fails? Everybody that I've spoken to is not in favor of it. The council, at the candidate forum, Councilwoman O'Donnell, excuse me, Vice Mayor O'Connell said that it amounts to about $20 per person. But everything keeps going up: property tax, ballot measures for parcel taxes, garbage, water fees, gas closing in five bucks. You know, all that adds onto that $20, so it's not just $20. Every dollar that you spend comes out of our pockets. My pocket's got the feds, the state, the county, and you're all hands in it. There's no more room for the people. You know, we can't just go to our employers or Social Security and ask for more money to spend so that we can spend more money on taxes. And I'm opposed to it. The second thing is, I was reading the budget or the grand jury report, and the response, F-26 says that while the tax measure isn't targeted to address pension or personnel costs, should it be adopted, voters may be used for any municipal or government purpose. So, I sincerely hope that if this does pass, that we don't use that money for other purposes that don't include the street paving. The last, or also, according to the documents on the website, it says that the pension costs for CalPERS increased 11 percent last year, and they keep forecasting to go up. But I couldn't find anything in there that addresses any mitigation for those. So, I just hope somebody, or the staff, or the city council's working on a plan to make that, those, keep those skyrocketing costs from going up, if they're funded. Last thing, I have two comments on the agenda that comes out.
Go ahead and finish up if you could.
Okay, I'll make them quick.
Thank you.
Can we, can we put like a paragraph that has plain language, non-government speak of what the agenda item, or the ballot measure, or not ballot measure, but the agenda item is, so that it makes it clear, and I don't have to read 437 pages of documentation to figure out what's going on with it? And the second thing is, on the ballot, or the agenda, it always says approve. It never says discuss, or approve, disapprove. So, it seems like it's a foregone conclusion that whatever's presented is going to get passed. I think that's something that we got to look at. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I've been asked if the vice mayor would like to make his comment.
Oh, I'd just like to make a clarification. I did reference $20, but the, what I meant was, for $20 of taxable items, which is not food and not prescription drugs, this measure would add 10 cents to the tax. So, that's why I said what I said.
Do we have other speakers?
Tom Hamilton.
Mr. Hamilton.
Good evening. I just want to take a moment to say thank you to Councilmember Salazar and Councilmember Davis for hosting their Meet the Candidate event this past weekend. It was well-attended, very well-executed. I really did appreciate it. It wasn't a one-on-one with each of them, it was a big round, a big round circle where everyone presented their ideas, and we had one long discussion about many, many topics facing the city altogether, and it was really well-done. So well-done that I would, I'm here to suggest that it become a regular event. Maybe it's something, you know, that a rotating pair of council members and the mayor could participate in each month so that it wouldn't be a, too much of a burden for any one person every month, because I know you guys give a lot of your time already. So, I wanted to make that suggestion. One thing that struck me during this discussion was that there seems to be, well, there isn't, doesn't seem to be, there is a divide here in San Bruno, and it's been kind of pushed open a little wider by the, by this election. And in talking with folks and having discussions like the one we had on Saturday, it's clear that about 90 percent of what we talk about, everybody agrees on. We all want better streets. We all want a better downtown. We all want to support our local businesses, and, and all these going on and on and on. And what seems to be happening is that we're focusing on that 10 percent, and a lot of energy goes into that 10 percent, and to push us all apart. And what I'm hoping for, and I'm hoping that everyone listening, when this election is over, we all need to still live here together. And regardless of the outcome of the election, I hope that we can all focus on that 90 percent and build on that and move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Tom. Okay, I'm showing no other speaker cards. Is there anybody in the audience that wanted to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? If not, we will go ahead and move on to announcements. Item A. Melissa.
Vote-by-mail ballots were mailed to all registered voters in San Mateo County on October 7th. Replacement ballots will be mailed through Tuesday, October 29th. To receive a replacement ballot, please contact my office at 616-7070. Also, there are three voting centers that will be servicing the city of San Bruno. Skyline College serves as an 11-day voting center and will be open to voters starting October 26, 2019, through Election Day. San Bruno City Hall and the Senior Center are four-day voting centers and will be open to voters starting November 1st through Election Day.
Okay, next, we have some, yes.
Can I just ask a clarification on that comment?
Of course.
When you say that these voting centers are open, are you walking in without a ballot, or do you need to have your ballot on those voting centers?
Both. You can, if you don't have a ballot with you, you can come in because there will be employees from the county here to assist you if you need a ballot. If you need to register to vote, they can assist with that as well.
Okay, next, we have some, under item B, some upcoming special events.
Thank you. Happening at the library this month, on October 25th, a weekly parent and child bilingual activity group begins. On October 26th, adults can decorate sugar skulls for Dia de los Muertos. And the library will host a special Diwali Festival of Light, Family Storytime, October 28th. For Halloween fun, join us on October 24th for the 24th Annual Goblin Grotto Event at the REC Center Gymnasium. On October 31st, the San Bruno Chamber of Commerce will sponsor Storytime at the Bay Area Entrepreneur Center located at 458 San Mateo Avenue. And immediately following, enjoy trick-or-treat on the avenue. Also that day, the Recreation Department will sponsor the Halloween Happening Event at Tanforan Mall. In City Park, the Culture and Arts Commission invites you to Shakespeare in the Park at Rotary Pavilion at City Park on October 27th. And the Recreation Department will also be hosting a mother-son kickball event at City Park on Saturday, November 3rd, with a picnic to follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Next on the agenda will be a proclamation celebrating and proclaiming October 23rd through the 31st as Red Ribbon Week. I'm not going to read all the whereas's, the chief can go into more detail, but as you know, it used to be noted as Red Ribbon, always around the Halloween time. Probably started back with Nancy Reagan, when it was Just Say No. And this is something that has been important that the community celebrated, and now we're stepping it up with wristbands as well. So, the council has theirs, staff has theirs, to lead by example as it begins tomorrow. So, whereas all of those who reside, work, and frequent the city of San Bruno are encouraged to demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing wristbands, commemorating, commemorating, gosh, Red Ribbon Week, and whereas, the city of San Bruno community further commits to contributing to the success of Red Ribbon Week. Now therefore, I, Rico E. Medina, Mayor of the city of San Bruno, and on behalf of our entire city council, proclaim October 23rd, 2019, through October 31st, 2019, as Red Ribbon Week, and we encourage all participants in the drug prevention education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but also throughout the year, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free lifestyle. Chief Barbara Rini.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. As the mayor mentioned, the city of San Bruno, in conjunction with the state attorney general's office, the San Bruno School District, and many other civic-minded organizations have participated in Red Ribbon Week since its be, since its beginning in 1985. Now, we often get a lot of questions, what's with the red ribbon, and how did it, how did it begin? So, we thought we'd kind of give you a brief background and story on where that comes from. Enrique Kiki Camarena was a drug enforcement agent in the mid-'80s. In 1985, he was killed in Mexico while working. Agent Camarena's mother had tried to talk him out of joining the DEA, and her, his response to her was, "I'm only one person, but I want to make a difference." In honor of Agent Camarena's memory and his battle against illegal drug trafficking, friends and neighbors began to wear red satin badges. Groups of parents frustrated with the destruction that alcohol and other drugs were causing their communities began forming drug-awareness coalitions and looked to Agent Camarena as a model, and embraced his belief that one person can make a difference. These coalitions also adopted the symbol of Agent Camarena's memory, the red ribbon. Today, the red ribbon serves as a catalyst to mobilize communities, to educate youth, and encourage participation in drug prevention activities. As the mayor mentioned, we've kind of evolved from the red ribbon to the, the red wristband to hopefully make it more, more accessible and, and a little bit cooler for the kids to wear in the school district, too. So, we appreciate your support. On behalf of the police department, thank you for taking the time to recognize this weekend its significance. Thank you.
Thank you, chief, and thank you for the background and information as to why we're proclaiming that and celebrating that. Next, item D, receive annual presentation from the Culture and Arts Commission.
Good evening. My name is Melody Tobin, Culture and Arts Commission, here to present our annual report. I'm not doing it. Sharing this with you. So, I have tonight with us is one of my fellow commission members, Judy Pacini, is here in the audience with us. Hi, Judy. I think Judy's the only other member here. But this year, our commission members, our chair is Pamela Gamble, our vice chair is Melissa Rolfs, our members are Jean George, Pamela Madden, Janet Monahan, yeah, Monahan, thank you, Judy Pacini, and myself, Melody Tobin. The commission is responsible for promoting the artist development of the community and preserving San Bruno's diverse cultural heritage. The commission's goals including acquiring and maintaining public art, as well as sponsoring programs and events that enhance the quality of life for the residents and improve the image and character of the community. The 2018-2019 accomplishments, we completed and installed artwork on three traffic signal controller boxes, which has been a long-term goal. We have selected two more city-owned boxes for art. We replaced what we found out were state-owned boxes. We're getting ready to move those into production. Again, we hosted Movies in the Park this year. We are getting ready to host Shakespeare in the Park, which is coming up this Sunday at 2:00 in the, in front of the Rotary Pavilion. We're hosting Macbeth. We hosted the Library Art Gallery Program, which is an annual event. We sponsored the Children's Art Project in conjunction with the Posey Parade and the Community Day in the Park. Hosted the International Children's Art Exhibit from San Bruno Sister City, Narita, Japan. And in conjunction with the Parks and Recreation Commission, we created a subcommittee to study the art options for the new Recreation and Aquatics Center. So, this is the 20, part of the 2018-2019 accomplishments. These are the three signal boxes that have been completed. From left to right, the Crystal Springs Road and Cunningham Way, which is right across the street from the Senior Center. You can see the little fox, it's kind of a nature-themed box. The middle one, which is more of a centennial-themed box, it's down in San Bruno Avenue and Third Avenue. And then the one on the right is in front of Hashes &amp; Brew on Cherry Avenue and San Bruno Avenue. Another, so these are the three, the second phase, two proposed, selected two of the city-owned traffic signal controller boxes. These are the next ones. The locations are on Smeath Lane and Seabiscuit Avenue, across from Tanforan, kind of right in front of Beverages &amp; More. And then San Mateo Avenue and Huntington Avenue, which is right by the Caltrain Station. And then the next one is Sharp Park Road in Pacific Heights, which is the third one we're going to do in the second phase, which is a city-owned box. So, our Movies in the Park this year were Bumblebee, Mary Poppins Returns. Yeah, I can't read that one. Captain Marvel, and then Ralph Breaks the Internet. Now, was it Breaks the Internet?
Yep.
Yeah, Ralph Breaks the Internet. And then, as I said, this coming Sunday is Shakespeare in the Park. It's Macbeth. Again, it's 2:00 in the city park in front of the Rotary Pavilion. The weather's supposed to be beautiful, so everybody come out, bring a chair, bring a picnic lunch, bring whatever you want to be comfortable and have a good afternoon. It's about an hour presentation, and it's usually a lot of fun. There's a lot of audience participation, and it's a great family event. This is the Library Art Program, and these are three of the, just a selection, three of the artists' representations that we are hanging in the gallery this year. Sponsored our Children's Art Project, so this is just a representation of the art that we did in conjunction with the Posey Parade and the Community Day in the Park back in June. And then the Children's Art Exhibit from Narita. And just to let you know that we're working with the Parks and Recs for the new Aquatic Center to bring in some art and something interesting and exciting for the new Aquatic Center. So, our goals for 2019 and 2020, to let you know what our city art fund balance is as of September 2019, is $306,301. We plan to continue to work with the Parks and Recs Commission to establish a significant art presence in the new REC and Aquatic Center. We are working to relocate the recognition sculpture due, the current location will be within the footprint of the new REC and Aquatic Center. We plan to continue the gallery exhibit program in the library. We will continue to host the 2020 Narita International Children's Exhibit artwork in the library. We will continue to present the Movies in the Park, and we will continue to present the Shakespeare in the Park. Complete the remaining three traffic signal art boxes. We'll sponsor the Children's Art Project in conjunction with the Posey Parade and the Community Day in the Park. We are going to create an interactive art map demonstrating the location of the Culture and Arts Commissioned art that we have so far in the city. And we're going to continue to develop the commission's vision for future art projects within the city of San Bruno. We'd like to recognize that this year we lost one of our former commission members, Barty Rosman Kudron, who passed away on June 15th. She was a member for 10 years on our commission. And then, we also, in June, dedicated a plaque on the memorial sculpture to Carolyn Livingston, who was a, recognized for 25 years of extraordinary service to the city of San Bruno. And she was one of the inaugural members of the Culture and Arts Commission. And that concludes our annual report. See, I got through that. I didn't know if I was going to be able to get through Barty and Carolyn.
You did well.
Those were difficult ones for me.
Any comments or questions?
Yes, do you have any questions?
Counsel. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for your work and the rest of the commissioners. I know it's not easy, and sometimes it can be a long and arduous journey to get from the first concept of something to a final presentation of it. I know especially the control boxes, I think it took you eight years, 10 years, from when we first proposed it to finally getting it to where it is, and...
Our biggest regret is that neither Barty nor Carolyn got to see it.
Yes, and I know they were part of it.
They were a part from the very beginning.
But you've done it, and you're continuing to do it, so that's fabulous.
They had the best view, hopefully.
So, that, that's something, I know, I've had, heard many comments from many people, especially the one that, you know, the people who view the most over the heart one at...
Bay Hill.
Bay Hill and Cherry. So, thank you for all of that. I have a couple of comments. You have a very robust budget, and I think it's fantastic, and I think it's very far-reaching of you to think of what to do for the Aquatics Center. But maybe, I mean, that's going to be three years, maybe longer, and you'll still be collecting money all those years, too. So, maybe there's a way to do a budget to say, we're going to do X amount of money for this art for the Aquatic Center, and with the rest of the money, we need to look at other things. Because while that's going to be a beautiful facility, it is only in one place in San Bruno, and we have many places that need your tender-loving care. So, I, I think that would be something that would be beneficial to everybody, you know, sit down, make a decision about how much money you're going to put aside for that, and then take the rest and do some things. Because I have some suggestions.
We know that we are going to have to provide the money to relocate the memorial sculpture 100 percent from our fund. So, right now, we are dedicating, and we're, we're working, we're going to reach out to the artists that created the memorial sculpture to help us figure out how to move it, help us find the perfect spot, hopefully within the city park to move it to, and figure out the budget for that. So, that, that's our next allocation for money, and we're not sure whether that's going to be $10,000, $20,000, $30,000. That, that's our next chunk of money that we're going to allocate. And then after that, we agree wholeheartedly that we need to allocate some money for another big project, and I, I feel that you're going to suggest something.
Well, I'm going to suggest several things.
Okay.
And, and for the people who think I might be being a little pushy, I, I was instrumental in starting the Culture and Arts Commission. It's kind of one of the things I'm very proud of, and very proud that they have their own funding source. So, yes, I'm going to get a little pushy. So, and, and part of this is, I'm, cannot vote with the streetscape plan, and I know part of the plan included the fountain at the, or defunct fountain at the train station. So, maybe in conjunction with that, the Culture and Arts Commission can work on putting something beautiful there. I've, I know that there are many opportunities, and I know that a zero-scape landscaping with some of the metal sculptures from Boris, and I always say his last name wrong.
Kudron.
Thank you. Would be, I think would be fabulous, but that's a suggestion. I put another suggestion down there on your, on the podium.
I see that. Thank you.
And it's, it's a fun one. It's, you know, people have been talking about a festival, and why don't we do street fairs anymore, and all those different things. And I came across this article about art on, on, it's actually on a parking lot on this particular one, and they had, they did a roller skate rink on top of it, and it was, they had a fabulous time, and they've done a lot of things. So, this might be something to take to the commission, and, and maybe with the San Bruno Chamber, and, you know, get some partnerships going and do something like that. So, those are my comments. And again, thank you very much. I know you've been, you know, you were in the very beginning, and you've been hanging in there and getting things done. So, and then Judy, thank you, too. I knew you were one of the newer, well, not anymore, huh? Okay. But thank you, too. It can be a steep learning curve when you deal with governments, though. So, thank you for hanging in there.
Laura.
To the chair, I just wanted to say, thank you for brightening up the city, because I think that's what art does. And the spots that I've seen them, and I've seen them all, they look great. So, good work, and it's, it's a pleasure to see the art, because it makes me smile.
Us, too.
Marty.
Yes, they're great. When, when you see something like that, it just gives you just a few moments to say, wow, that's really cool. And, and bringing art to our downtown, I know, I know we're going to be talking about that all after we accuse myself later, but having, having some additional art downtown would be lovely. So, thank you.
Michael's good. And then I will just recap to say, on behalf of the council, please convey back to the entire board, our thanks and appreciation for the volunteer, and for having visions to things, but then to see them to fruition. And this was long talked about, but it's now done, and it's continuing. And that's what we should honor, in addition to the two ladies that you acknowledged and honored at the end. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Let's... Let's move on to consent.
All items on the consent calendar are considered routine or implement in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested.
So, I know there are three items to have comments on, but not separate action, right, F and G, right? F and G, and then I. Are there any other items that want to be pulled, or want to be just commented on?
I'd like to, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'd like to pull item K.
For a separate vote?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, and why don't we go ahead? We have F, G, and I. K, we will take separate. Bless you. On G, it's a resolution accepting the Crystal Springs Road sewer replacement project as complete, authorizing the filing of notice of completion with the San Mateo County Recorder's Office, and authorizing release of the construction contract retention in the amount of $162,028.49. And I think on these next two items, it was just a matter of staff to give a little more insight as to the project's completion, as well as it came under budget. And so, if we can have staff?
Sure. Javon Grogan, city manager. I'll have Jimmy...
I'll have Jimmy Tan, our Public Works Director, give that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Tan, Director.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. So you mentioned, is it item G or F that you would like?
There's going to be F and G.
Okay.
But we're on F for right now.
Sure. So for item F, this is related to the Arbor Court Pressure Regulating Valve Replacement Project. This is a regulating project, a regulation station is something that, you know, we use to reduce high water pressure to low water pressure so that we can distribute normal pressure to the houses. We went, we came to council back in December of 2018 to work the construction contract to case the construction and for a budget of $369,000. And, you know, we completed the project, substantially completed in August of 2019. And the total change orders amount was about, close to about $21,000 in that project. We came under budget, as noted in the staff report, for, let's see here, about $26,900 will be returned back to the Water Enterprise Fund. And this project also wanted to mention, I know we designed it in-house as well because it's something that I know we can easily do and we did manage deconstruction management and inspection in-house as well. So we saved more money on this project.
And I'm sorry, I threw you off by reading G. And I, so item F was the resolution accepting the Arbor Court Pressure Regulating Valve Replacement Project as complete, authorizing the filing of notice of completion with the San Mateo County Recorder's Office and authorizing release of the construction contract retention in the amount of $19,498. Correct? $498. So we have the F and G. Marty, did you want to say any additional on that?
It's just one of those things where I think it's really important for the public to help understand that when we put projects in our sewer and water system to improve our infrastructure, it costs money. And this is a case where I think the, our staff definitely should take some bigger credit and I think just having it on consent doesn't share with the public because I don't think too many people are reading through our, through our agenda packet. So, thank you very much. And that goes for the next project, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item I, thank you, Director Tan, was accept a resignation from Traffic and Safety Parking Committee, member effective October 3rd, 2019, and direct the city clerk to post a notice of vacancy in accordance with state law. So for those...
That was L.
No. Oh, gosh, L. God, I'm not, you guys, I need your help here more tonight. Where are my glasses? That's L, isn't Larry?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could we go back to G? I'm sorry.
No, don't be sorry.
Because G, G is, G's a big project. G's a $3.7 million project that came $760,000, $760,000 under budget, so.
Thank you, Marty.
Thank, thank you.
No, no.
Thank you. Good evening again. Regards to the Crystal Springs, Crystal Springs Shore Road Replacement Project. This project consisted of replacing about 3,000 feet of sewer main pipelines from 8 to 24 inches in diameter, which started at the intersection of Oak and, and Crystal Springs Road all the way to San Mateo Avenue and El Camino. So it's, was really challenging. We had a lot of utilities to cross along El Camino, but we were able to complete this work under budget. The original contract with KJ Woods, construction was an amount of $3.3 million and we also had a contingency of about, you know, $502,000 on this project. But, you know, we were able to work with the contractor on various issues related to the project as well as there's some scope changes that were done, you know, out in the field in order to get the pipeline installed. So we came in budget for this. We didn't have to use a contingency on this project. We have about, you know, $761,500 left over, which we return back to the Waste Water Enterprise Fund. So, yeah, this is, you know, it's one of those projects that needed to be completed, cost money, but we were able to, you know, make sure that we came under budget on this.
Thank you, Director Tan, on both those. And Marty, thank you for having those acknowledged because I think it's important for us and the staff. And then I know Michael, Laura have comments.
Okay, through the chair, I just wanted to, I couldn't resist adding on that none of these repairs could have been done without the fee increases that we reluctantly imposed. And as much as we regretted having to do that, clearly there is a benefit to doing it and clearly we're accomplishing important work that was absolutely required. And the only way we could have done it was through those fee increases. So I just wanted to mention that.
Laura.
Excellent point, Councilmember Salazar. But I just want to kind of, from a council member, just acknowledge that, you know, that was a complicated project in a very busy neighborhood, a lot of traffic, schools, and I just want to thank you for adjusting times, start times to accommodate the additional traffic and the need. And it just seemed, I live in the area, I go by that a lot, it just seemed to be a pretty smooth project. And so I want to thank the staff and just for job well done.
Thank you.
If you can convey that to the team as well as I did here, the communication to the neighboring schools as well as to the residents, it was well done and it kept them on track and updated as to the progress of the project.
Thank you.
Crystal Springs Road. Okay, now we're going to move on to L. Thank you, Jimmy. That was, again, when we read it, accept the resignation from the Traffic and Safety Parking Committee, member effective October 3rd of this year, and direct the clerk to post a notice of vacancies in accordance with state law. So John was on the TSPC Traffic Safety Parking Committee from before and needed to step aside, but yet came back and came back with his knowledge and wisdom and experience, which Tom will attest to, and has helped us out and has a great opportunity in his life. I reached out to him and called him on behalf of all of us to thank him for his generosity and his time and that, all that he gives to this community. Doesn't just do it on the TSPC, there's a lot of other things that he does for various service groups and for the community. And you could always count on him, no matter what, he would be there. And so, and if you needed food and you needed barbecue and you needed this, you needed that, John would handle it. So we just are pulling this to acknowledge him, thank him, wish him the best in his future. And he reminded me that he'll still be around. So he's not, he's not out of our lives and you will see him in San Bruno again. So why don't we go ahead with a motion to pass everything with the exception of K?
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion made and second to approve all items but K. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Five O voice. Now we're going to move on to K. Adopt a resolution waiving the encroachment permit fees, staff labor reimbursement fees, and insurance rider premium costs for the encroachment permit application for the Halloween road closure on Park Avenue and appropriating $412 from the general fund. Marty.
Okay. Let me first start by saying that I'm in full support of having this event occur and waiving the fees. I've been going to that location for the last couple of years and it's fantastic. Having, having the street closed and where you can walk with your young child and feel safer that you could cross the street and not worry about incoming traffic. And that neighborhood does an incredible job to, to really liven up the Halloween spirits. I can leave it at that. The reason why I'm pulling it is to understand for other organizations that are interested in how the fee waiver process works. How can a neighborhood or organization, when they come up to do, wanted to do an event that would cost money, how does it work to where they could say, hey, we would like the city to waive the fees? So I just want to make it clear, I'm in total support of this, but I wanted to have the public to understand and myself to understand, how does one get their fees waived if they have a fantastic project or idea?
Is that some of the staff is prepared to discuss?
Sure, sure. So discussing the full fee schedule and the waiver process, we won't go into that, but what is germane is why this is before the city council. So this is before the city council because our fee schedule process does not have a waiver provision that grants the city manager or department heads the ability to waive city fees outside of an operational issue or something that the city manager is addressing. And so this is a request of a neighborhood to have a community event. And so the process for that right now is to make a formal request of the governing body and so yourself to waive city fees and requirements. And so that is why, that is why this item is before you today. When we take a look at our fee schedule in early 2020, we can talk about a formal process. A number of cities that I'm familiar with through their annual budgeting process go through and say what programs or neighborhood events the city will subsidize and approve that through the budget process. And so if it's done through the budget process, it does not have to come on a one-off basis. But aside from having that, this is, this one came up and we did want to formally bring it to the governing body for your support.
Good, I'm good with it. I mean, it's a great event. If you guys can make it, it's fantastic.
And I would say, just to go into the history, that this, this started a few years ago because some folks in the neighborhood, because the streetlights were out, they were worried about the safety of the young people and vehicles. So that's how it started. It wasn't just a cordon off a street, it was done strategically to try to protect the youth that came up in strolls, but there were no streetlights. So as a safety element, then therefore that's how it established back then. Then after, obviously, a period of time, streetlights were working. So it has come forward to the neighborhood still wishing that, which is placed on one or two persons to go around and get everybody's approval, everybody's signature within the neighborhood, make sure everybody's on the same page because it means you don't get in, you don't get out of your house. So there are many steps that have to be taken, but that's why this is before us today, but I wanted to give a little history as to how it, how it started as well, so. But thank you. Okay, any action on, please, Laura?
I just want to say that I think that there's a few events that happen in San Bruno that are neighborhood events that I think are really positive and I'd like to see them continue. I think it's a really positive event and I know that kids from outside that neighborhood come to the, come to that area to block off. Glenview in the Mills, in the, in the Parkview area is another area that gets blocked off for the Santa Claus. And those are, I think, really uplifting. We don't have a lot of community events throughout the year, so I think it's a safety thing and I, and I like to just see that the residents know about it, know the address. If, maybe we can publicly unite, just state what the address is, it's being cordoned off so that residents who are listening tonight and they've got little kids, and they want to bring them to that particular area that they feel safe and they can walk through the neighborhoods and that it's a, it's a great event and a lot of doors that do open. So you get a lot of doors for your walking.
And quality candy. I'm just saying, but you may want to let the neighborhood more, know more are coming.
Move to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have five O voice approval. Okay, now we'll move on to conduct of business.
Item 6A, appoint citizen to fill one vacancy on the San Bruno Planning Commission. On October 15th, 2019, the city council held a special meeting to interview applicants for the one vacancy on the planning commission. The applicants that were interviewed were Marco Durazzo, Tom Gardner, Aros Enzberg-Harman, James Mahon, and Matthew Sum.
Thank you. So what we'll do at this time, and unless council has any differences, that we'll go ahead and open it for a nomination with second. And then I'll put that off to the side and then we'll, we'll continue and then we'll see, and then we'll bring them back. Is that acceptable to everybody?
Through the chair, if I could just make a brief comment before we open it up.
Please.
I just wanted to say that this, this appointment is a little bit different from the ones that we make for some of the other committees and it is definitely a very important one. We had very, I think, really great interviews with the candidates, with, with all of them. And it really was an impressive group that, that volunteered to, to be interviewed for the position. And I just wanted to thank everyone that, that came out and spent the time with us and gave us their thoughts and, you know, shared their, their vision for, you know, the city and let us know what, what their interest was. So I just wanted to say that because, you know, we can only appoint one unfortunately, but we had excellent candidates and so I just wanted everyone to feel that, or to know that we did appreciate it and we were, we were, I think, that you all agree that it was a very impressive group.
I think you'd have a five O vote on that. And again, we do hold it on a separate evening because obviously we want to give more specialized time. It's one-on-one, it's usually, sometimes folks are in a group setting, but we bring each person in individually to be interviewed and go through the questions and process. And they not only have the application, but they have a additional questionnaire that is also provided. Keep in mind, as Michael said, now they have to fill out Form 700 when appointed, now they have to worry about the Brown Act and their pay is zero. And that means the architectural review meetings, that means two meetings a month, and that means that, you know, you're more of a public figure per se, that people are going to ask questions about what you did, where your interests lie and et cetera. So it is appreciated that these folks are willing to give up their time and their love for their community. So with that, why don't we move on to nominations?
Mr. Mayor?
Marty.
I'd like to nominate Marco Durazzo.
Is there a second? Other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Harmon.
I'll second.
Are there any other? I have a motion and a second from Irene and Michael on Mr. Harmon. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Sum.
Is there a second? Any other nominations? At this point, the one nomination so far, unless I hear anything else, is Mr. Harmon that has had a motion and second. Are there any other nominations? Not, is there any action by council?
Move to approve?
Who?
Move to appoint.
Or point, sorry.
Mr. Harmon. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and second to approve Mr. Harmon on the planning commission. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Five O vote, Mr. Harmon, congratulations. You now will go to the library and you'll begin reading. Just kidding.
Through the chair, through the chair, can I just make a comment?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you for your time and, Michael, I did all your comments as well. I will say that I felt definitely that one candidate stood out amongst the rest. I felt like you came prepared, you very knowledgeable. I know it's not an easy setting, sitting across a rambunctious group like us, but I felt that you were the right candidate for that and I definitely concur with my candidate, my other council members here who've supported you. And I think it's a really important job. It, you know, the planning commission and what you have to offer and your vote coming to council weighs heavy on a lot of our decisions. And so I appreciate your time and dedication to this upcoming planning commission. So thank you.
Any other comments? No pressure.
I know you won't let us down.
Yes. Okay, with that, again, as Michael said, and I really do sincerely appreciate everybody that applied, I think we did ask questions too of some folks. Would they be interested in some other positions potentially? So obviously your application will remain on file with the city clerk and if a vacancy or other vacancies open up, you will be reached out to. Next.
Item 6B, adopt resolution, adopting the San Mateo Avenue Conceptual Streetscape Plan. Through the chair.
Irene, no, please.
I just, I need to recuse myself since I own property in the area.
Marty.
I believe I am also within that thousand foot, so.
So both Irene and Marty have recused themselves, so we're living within the radius of 1,000 feet or less. And so they'll depart and then return after we've concluded this. City staff.
Sure. Javon Grogan, City Manager, good afternoon, council, members of the public. We're here tonight for adoption of the San Mateo Ave Conceptual Streetscape Plan. As the city council and the community will remember, the draft plan was completed in September of this year and on September 24th, the city council held a study session to receive public testimony, accept the report, and provide staff with feedback. Staff has taken that feedback and are here tonight for council, hopefully acceptance of the plan. And I will now turn it over to Darcy Smith, the city's Community and Economic Development Director, that will give tonight's presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Darcy Smith and I'm the city's Community and Economic the City's Community and Economic Development Director, and I'll be making a brief presentation on the report for the adoption of the San Mateo Avenue Conceptual Streetscape Plan. The agenda for the presentation tonight will quickly summarize the objective of tonight's meeting. I'll give you a brief background for the plan preparation, summarize the community and city engagement sessions, recap the City Council's September study session, and summarize by closing before, with the action for you tonight. The consultant, Jacob Tobias of WRT, is in the audience tonight, and he will not be making a presentation, as he made a long presentation in September that was very thorough. But he is available tonight to answer any questions if you have at the end of my presentation. And while I'm making the presentation, this was very much a multi-departmental effort with team members from the City's Public Works Department and Community Services Department, very engaged, as this involved the city's streets and the city's parks and public art, as you heard earlier tonight. And the project planner, Ruchidande, is also here tonight, and the City's Planning Housing Manager, Pamela Wu, who were very extensive in leading the efforts for our department. The objective for tonight's meeting is to end with, hopefully, you adopting the resolution to adopt this conceptual plan. And I'll just start with a one-slide recap of the City Council's study session on September 24th, where you reviewed this plan. We spent about an hour reviewing it, accepting public comments, and answering extensive questions. And at that meeting, you were in support of the plan, which, again, was a conceptual design. And you commented that you were very much in support of the simple and elegant design theme. There were two revisions made to the plan as a result of your comments. One was to add text studying a future potential vehicle drop-off and loading zone near Posey Park, which would also serve the Caltrans station on the western side, access primarily from the eastern side. And I think you were interested in having that loading zone added. Also, text was added to ensure that any future lighting elements, such as the hanging elements that are over the Paseos in the conceptual design are studied, to ensure they will withstand the heavy wind loads that can occur in downtown San Bruno. And I want to just close by saying that, I mean, it was overall, there was a lot of support voice, both from the community and the council, and I think that's a real testament to the extensiveness of the community and the city engagement, and the consultant really deeply kind of understanding the setting in the downtown and what its strengths were, where the areas for improvement were. And ultimately, this is the community's design vision for the downtown, and I think what we heard throughout the whole process was a very consistent vision, which is great. There is that unit, unity around what the downtown should be, what our assets are, and again, where the areas for improvement are. So that's a testament to the success, I think, of the process. So I'll cover the plan background. We probably have some new audience members tonight and aren't familiar with that, but much of this is repetitive. As you may know, the city adopted the general plan back in 2009, and that general plan focused a lot on rebuilding the downtown. The city had a redevelopment agency, it invested in the downtown, had the vision to move the Caltrans station to the downtown, which is a significant public works project. It is the heart of our downtown, heart of our city, and I think we've, we've invested in other areas of the city, but the downtown is in need of significant investment. The Transit Quarters Plan, which covered the city's downtown and the redevelopment area before it was eliminated, identified this Streetscape Plan as a short-term implementation item. So here we are, six years later, getting started on it. But I think the vision of that Transit Quarter Plan was to stimulate economic investment in the city. So this is very much an economic revitalization plan in line with the goals of the general plan and the Transit Quarters Plan. As a matter of background, the general plan lays out that vision, and this, this action tonight, 10 years later, really solidifies that vision. You have the symbolic heart of the city, the downtown, you have the main street, and the goal with this plan is to improve the aesthetics, also expand the Streetscape amenities, which are things like benches and lighting, things that make the, the downtown sidewalks a really nice place to walk, improving crosswalks, so it's safer to cross the street, and just overall upgrade the appearance. And I want to emphasize, this is a combined effort. This isn't just the city. This involves merchants and property owners, and I'll give you some examples of how we engage them in the community engagement efforts. But it really did bring out a, a wide audience in the downtown, some business owners who hadn't really involved with the city up until this point. And really, the goal is to make a destination downtown where people like to go to dine, or they shop, they go to the park, park areas, and they have a place to meet. So the Streetscape Plan essentially lays out that vision, as I mentioned, to create a place, a sense of identity. It's basically what you want the street to be. And all of the major downtowns around us have had Streetscape Plans. This community has had Streetscape Plans, too, in the past. It, it just weren't, the funding wasn't necessarily there to implement that, them at that time. You can see downtowns here, like Laurel Street and San Carlos, and other communities that have done some great things around their downtowns, like the lighting you see here. And I want to emphasize, a lot of these communities started with the plan, and then over many times were able to secure the funding. There's a lot of grant funding. Once you have this planned in place, there's lots of other ways to make an investment over time. And why is the plan needed? It really does spur economic revitalization, but it also helps the city when we work with private property owners to tell them, these are our expectations for the street design. Instead of trying to guess at what kind of sidewalk width we should have, or what benches we should have on a new project, we have the vision laid out in this plan, and we will require all private property owners to make investments consistent with this plan on private property, and in the cities right away when they build in front of their properties. I want to emphasize, we will really strive through the budget process to initiate some maybe lower-budget quick wins, such as new trashcans, some signage. There's a lot of things in this plan that can be added over time, and if we do go in and put in new sidewalks, we can, you know, store the trashcans, we can hold on to the signage. There are some expensive items, especially the paving and the park improvements. There, there are other sources for park improvements, such as the development impact fee, which you initiated, and people are paying into that. So I want to emphasize that the funding, this really lays the foundation for future funding, and some of that funding may be incremental, some of it may be through grants, but we're really committed to implement this plan. So the key characteristics of the plan are, again, define the Streetscape, have that cohesive identity, focus on things that are really important to the community, lighting, benches, signage, safer sidewalks, having sidewalks that are functional for people of all ages, and pleasant. The project workflows, this has been about a year ago, when the city first released the request for proposals. You authorized funding for this plan in January, and the plan process took about eight months. And see the process here. We started with feasibility analysis, the community engagement, which I'll talk about, and span several months of intensive engagement, and finally, the plan preparation. So quickly, I'll go over the community engagement, which was kind of, this plan, unlike maybe the general plan, the Transit Quarter Plans, or the Downtown Parking Management Plan, gave us a real opportunity to do something neat, which was have a walking workshop. We held that on a weekday with the business community, got really great turnout, and it was sort of a conversation about what are some of the great things about the downtown, but what are some challenges? Of course, we stood in front of a trashcan, thought, ah, yeah, that's a challenge. But we looked at the trees, we looked at the crossings, we looked at all the things that we thought just needed some, some attention. We held a drop-in workshop, which was on a Saturday afternoon in front of Citibank Plaza. That allowed us to really get a great audience of children. You'll see them here drawing on the sidewalk. That little heart says the avenue. And we did sort of rank choicing with the dots, which is always fun. I think what you'll see in this photo is just the wide variety of people who engage in this effort, and that's partially because we went to them. We went out and had the walking workshop. We, we had this workshop that was just drop-in, very casual, with some fun balloons. And I just want to commend the consultant and the city staff, kind of went above and beyond the norm to host these fun workshops. I think we just got a different audience. When we actually had the nighttime workshop, which was in this room on a weekday at 7:00, we, we only got about a dozen people. And I think it's a testament to the evolution of community engagement. We also had an online survey with about 100 respondents. That was very great. And we also had stakeholder meetings. So again, we went out to the community, we met with very engaged community members like Dennis Sammett, but we also got less engaged people, who said, this is sort of our first experience with the city asking us, like, how can we make the downtown better? And I will tell you that the chamber is just being very involved with more of a presence in the downtown, hosted in the entrepreneurial center. So, you know, again, we're kind of coming to their, their main street and engaging with them, and I will say, that's been very positive. We also engaged city staff. We engaged the police department. I mentioned Public Works, Community Services. But we also had meetings with a wide variety of city committees and commissions, in addition to the Planning Commission, who reviewed it twice. We, we went to Culture and Arts Committee, had a great, you know, conversation with them. It wasn't a lecture session. It was very much a conversation about what are the opportunities for art. We met with Parks and Rec Commission, because, again, the Streetscape Plan includes two parks. They may seem like forgotten plazas, but they are identified as city's parks, and that also gives us a funding source. And the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the Pedestrian Advisory Committee is very engaged around these issues, such as pedestrian design, pedestrian safety, and they were offered great feedback. So in closing, I'll just summarize. We, we had the September study session, and you had some great suggestions. One, you can see here with Posey Park to look at a drop-off zone. It is a little tight, but that said, I think when we look at the design for this plaza and reinvigorating it, looking at drop-off could, could be really important here. And that you see this great example of the art, and someone said, well, that looks, I mean, the hanging lights, that looks great, but gosh, don't want it to fall on anyone. So if, and if we do proceed with this great light, which I thought was kind of an interesting way to light the Paseo, you can see it really kind of draws people in, then we'd study the wind load feasibility. But it, it has been done. The picture on the right is a real picture, so I think it is feasible. So we didn't want to eliminate these completely. So last, I'll close with just, what's the outcome of this plan? It is really, again, it was set by the community and the council and the commissions that we visited. It's to design the downtown, to have a simple and elegant design with activated Paseos, better public spaces, unified street features, and again, that unique identity. And what's identity? It's the city's heart. It's the city's main street, the downtown. In closing, I just wanted to thank the consultant team, too. We had a great consultant. Jacob Tobias from WRT was the lead. We also had CSW help with engineering and Parisi Transportation Consultants, who also did, I think, the Transit Quarters Plan and has worked with us in the past. So in closing, tonight's action is a request to adopt a resolution adopting this conceptual Streetscape Plan. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, or direct them to the consultant, Jacob Tobias.
Through the chair. Darcy, I just want to say, thank you so much, because I think you've just been a tremendous asset to the staff at the city. It's so, just so exciting to see where we've come and to feel like we know that this can happen. You've put together a great team. The work that you've done this past year is just exceptional. So, thank you. I just want to make sure I say that. The other comment I want to make is that I, I was one of the ones that made the comment last time about Posey Park and maybe doing a drop-off. There really is a drop-off. It's just further down, and I think maybe it's just not, maybe it needs some striping or some better signage. And so there is, there is really a drop-off. I just think it's not clear. So when you walk, you see things differently than when you actually drive. So when I walked, I saw what I needed to see. I love the street sign that goes up and over the San Mateo Avenue. I think that's just beautiful, and I'd love to, I'd love to see that one versus the half-court. So just overall, the vision that you've created for the Streetscape Plan is exactly, I think, what the residents want. You know, we, it's something that's, it's pleasant, it's safety, there's, there's red zones, there's lighting, big trees, the design, the, I mean, everything, I think, that everybody's been talking about. And so I, I believe in the vision, and I know that, that this, this San Mateo Avenue will just be a very beautiful place. I think, I think one of the comments as a resident, and maybe we can stop at this question, is we've done this before with no results. How can we assure residents that once a plan is, is approved and adopted by the City Council, that we will actually move forward? And so maybe tell me a little bit about, and there's, there's some big numbers, and there's phase one, phase two, but what does it take for, and maybe in your experience, what does it take for a plan like this to come to fruition, where residents can really feel excited about it and know something like this can happen?
City manager?
Yeah. Let me take the, the first part of that, and then Darcy can chime in. You're right. At, at $19 million, do we have $19 million to execute this plan right now? No, we do not. All the downtowns that we all love and enjoy, that we see are revitalized, really started with a plan, and that's what this is. This is taking the first step in creating that palette and saying, here's what we envision. The other thing that we should remember is that we do not have to do it all with the city's dollars. Part of creating the palette is when there is private market investment along the downtown, we are saying to the developer how they should improve the, the front of their property and the pedestrian realm. And so not all of it is funded with city dollars. The other point, and Darcy hit on this a little bit, is that we do have two parks there, Posey Park and Centennial Park, and we do have park and lo funds and development impact fee funds that will pay for some of those park improvements that can be dedicated towards downtown. The other sort of overarching, on-the-balcony statement that I, I think is important to make is, as we have development proposals and as we negotiate for community benefits, I think this needs to be high on the list, because we know it's high on the list of what the community has articulated for what they want in their downtown. And so as we have development projects that are coming into the city, and if there's a community benefit proposal, I think this is high on the list of what staff is negotiating for. Outside of that, it's looking for every piece of revenue we have to dedicate to it. You know, we have a half-cent sales tax measure that could be general purpose. You know, a large portion of the community has identified roads, roads, roads as the number one thing. That's not to say that there might be some small project that needs a little quick win or seed funding to make an immediate improvement. And so we will continue to sort of strive for every avenue, but it all starts with the plan. And we don't have the money to fund the plan now, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't articulate the vision.
Well said. Thank you so much for that. So I want to focus on the two parks. So we'll start with Posey Park. I agree. I mean, we need to move benching toward the street and keep it away from the back. If you talk to anybody who works for Caltrans, it's a constant problem with homelessness, and they're, they're down there fixing the elevators. You wouldn't believe, people are getting locked in elevators because of the vandalism that's happening. So I want to make sure that whatever we come up with and to put money towards, that it's sort of vandal-proof. I don't know if that's even possible. But yeah, anything, it needs to be some sort of space that's permeable, number one, right? Get rid of a lot of cement and add more greenery and bigger trees. And so I think staff's kind of hit it. I think it's, I think they know what the problems are. The fountain, and I hate to hear the word defunct, but, you know, 10 years ago, when we, we thought about development, we thought about fountains. Fountains were a great idea. Well, guess what? We hit a drought, and fountains aren't a great idea. So I understand where we're coming and that there's a need to do something different than that, than having a fountain that's going to waste water, that's a precious resource that we don't need to have. And that comes with problems and issues, too. So let's make something that's beautiful, and there's so much great things you could do with greenery and whatnot. So I think that's a great idea. The other park that's across from Bank of America, I, I guess, I don't know what the long-term vision is, because I know we need parking, so I just am afraid or fearful of, you know, could that be the entrance to a downtown parking thing? It's a lot we own. We don't have to go buy the lot. So I want to see something happen, but I don't want to put a ton of money into something that I know, you know, 10 years down the road, five years down the road, we've got a plan to do something that we're going to tear it up. So I think we need to be careful in what we decide to do there. That would be another question. Parking. So as a parent, as a former owner of a business on San Mateo Avenue, parking is your number one. To lose two spots in front of my business is kind of devastating, right? It's two less spots that I have. I know in the 400 block, it's pretty limited on parking. We've added a new aperture that doesn't have as much parking. The commercial space isn't even open yet, and parking's a constant struggle. So my question is, is there anywhere to squeeze more parking anywhere in the downtown area? From a red, red curb, it's not needed. We can gain a spot here. Is there anything on the El Camino that we can gain? Is there anything? Because we're going to lose, what is it, 11 spots on San Mateo Avenue? So it's something like that. So I just, I know we need the spots, because I think the safety's a big piece. We should be able to drop off somebody on San Mateo Avenue that's a handicap spot. So I just, I don't know what can be done. I don't know, you know, even if it's, if it's even possible, but I don't know if anything's been looked at. But I hate to lose parking, and I know we need to, but I hate to lose parking, so I'm always afraid of that. I think that those are all my comments. Let me just see. I can't wait to see larger trees. I mean, when you look down San Mateo Avenue, I want to see the greenery, not a lot of old storefronts, although storefronts are pretty unique and different, and I love that, that look, too, so we're not going to take away from that. One of the big problems that happened on the last Streetscape remodel was those, and I think you, I saw it in one of your pictures in the present, in your packet, was the baked planter boxes. Baked planter boxes and overgrown shrubbery that now you can't see beyond, beyond those. They took up a lot of parking, and then you took up a lot of visibility. So I don't want to see something that's at that eye level, that's now blocking the view of something that's on a business that's trying to stay open and keep their doors open in front. And I appreciate the work that staff has done on this project. And I appreciate the work the staff has done on this project and the business and the community input. It's been really good to hear a lot of people and see the attendance at these meetings. Thank you.
Michael, I can go to you or there are two speakers.
I'll just make some quick, my comments are very brief. I think Laura addressed a lot of what I had to say. And I really do think it is a good plan. And I also thank staff for all the work they put into it. I know there were questions about, you know, the value of this plan where there, when there is no money to do any of it, but I agree with staff that the timing, timing is everything. And I do think that having this plan in place right now, when we are starting to see some interest in developing parcels in San Bruno is important because we don't want to move ahead with those unless we have a bigger plan. And I think this was a key component, something that was missing from the other planning that we had done. So I definitely welcome this. I think it's definitely going to make downtown look great. And if we can implement it incrementally, it'll definitely go from there. But we need a catalyst and having this in place, I think, is very important. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I'd like to move to our two speakers and then I'll have some comments. Please.
Val Morgan.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I know it's a long meeting and I'll be very brief. I've attended all of the meetings to do with the downtown because it's something that's close to my heart. First of all, I'd like to thank Jacob Rivka and Josh, I believe it was from WRT, for all their hard work and for the city staff for all their work to bring this to fruition. I love the plan in general. I just have a few comments. I'm wondering, is it possible to persuade Caltrans to continue their bus route along San Mateo Avenue to the El Camino rather than turning it up Geneveen and provide two more bus stop shelters closer to the El Camino? I sincerely hope that the Posey Park and Centennial Parks will be included in this project, as many people present at the meetings and streetwalk express this through. I hope that the drop-off passenger loading zone for Caltrans Station will be included at the Posey Park. It just makes a lot of sense to have it there. I have to say, I'm disappointed in the three proposed designs for the Centennial Park. This area will be the focal point for the whole downtown. We need a plaza with as much open space, paved space as possible. There could be planters on both sides with lots of seating for people to sit and read and enjoy their lunch and space for children to run and play and maybe ride their tricycles around. There should be a nice fence or wall at the back to screen off the parking lot. There should be a flagpole that can be raised for various ceremonies and also a raised platform for entertainers or somebody to make a speech should have covered over it. And a large open area would be, could accommodate a small farmer's market or a gathering place for art exhibitions or music events. And we should keep a fountain there as well because it's a big attraction for children. Finally, I think that the street should be referred to as the downtown San Bruno. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Val.
Arus Harmon.
Good evening, Arus Harmon, 6:33 second Ave. in Bel Air. I first want to really quickly ask, am I allowed to comment now? Because if I've been appointed to the Planning Commission and I'm within, I'm sure I'm within whatever is the relevant range.
Well, you know what? We admire that you're already concerned about that. Thank you.
So, okay.
Yes, and yes you are.
My lovely spouse, Plymouth, could not be here tonight. She is visiting family. She would be very upset with me if I did not provide her continuous more public art. In particular, we, I mean, we walk into downtown from the Angus Avenue entrance and we always look at that just bare wall and go, "That would make a great mural." And the walls underneath the Caltrans underpass as well. I mean, I think this is an opportunity to, I mean, every high school in America has some great artists in it, you know? I mean, this is an opportunity that you could really look at, at having like a sort of a school project to develop ideas for it and implement it. For myself, I just want to endorse the previous speaker. I really would like to see that Centennial Park broadened out with the parking that is behind it concentrated into taller structures. So if you take all of those flat lots we have and essentially stack them up in a smaller space that both, you know, move that out towards the ends, obviously you're going to need some parking in the middle for handicap spots, as was discussed, and drop-off. But if you move more of the parking out, we could open up that space and have a space for farmers' markets, festivals, maybe some kind of a fountain along the lines, if you're familiar with the very flat one that has the tubes that's on the oval in San Jose that kids love and something you could turn on for a limited amount of time, use less water, not have it on continuously. And then in general, I would like to see sort of more space along the sidewalks, which kind of leads me into my other comment. I know we discussed in my interview the other day, my concerns about incentives for assembly of parcels as we're doing this. I think if we can find a way to give the current parcel owners incentives to essentially take their floor space and compress it a little bit away from the current sidewalk right away, create more outdoor seating while building up. You get more floor space while taking up a smaller footprint. It creates more, more public space. And you can have that kind of public-private transition with cafes, having street-side seating and so on. So, but yeah, I'm really happy to see this moving forwards and I'm thrilled to be, looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. Any other folks who wanted to speak on this item? Mr. Tom Hamilton.
I didn't fill out a card, but I'll be fast. I want to echo some of what Commissioner Morgan said. I was definitely in favor of this when it came before the Planning Commission. I would like to see as part of the Centennial Park redesign, open space, open space, places for seating, also performance space, you know, a stage where you have, you know, live music, you know, encourage events and encourage people to come to downtown. I also want to echo a couple of comments that I said when this was presented at Planning, which are in response to some comments that we got, public comments that we got before it came to Planning. One was, "Why do this if you don't have the money for it?" And the other was, "We've tried this before and it failed." So the reason you do this is how will we know how much money to go out and find unless we know what we want and how much it costs? So that's why, that's why we do this. And that's why this is the first step. And second, that we've tried this before and it didn't work, that's true, but if you take that as your guide, then there'll never be any progress on anything anywhere. So that's just ridiculous. And I know you guys won't accept that feedback. So that's great. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else who wanted to speak on this topic? Okay. For myself, I mean, some of the comments were already discussed, so I'm not going to reiterate everything. But on Centennial Park, you know, as history is, the city bought Wells Fargo a long time ago. And that was to have skin in the game, to say, "We own something on San Mateo Avenue," is back when I was on city staff. And therefore, they had it. And then it was just a chain-linked fence. And then therefore, you have it today, which was in-house staff that came together, put something together, utilize what currently staff had on hand to have something temporarily. Well, obviously, that temporary has become quite lengthy. My understanding too, what I need clarification from staff, is the Centennial Park was purchased through redevelopment. And therefore, it being redevelopment, there might be some provision that it has to remain open space of some sort because if it's sold or utilized for a different means, then it has to go back and the monies. And I just want to clarify.
That is, that is correct. It's designated as a park and there's a deed restriction on that property.
So it kind of is a park and will almost have to remain a park. If we were to sell it or do that, then it goes back to various agencies, not just the city.
To the chair, on that question, if we could, some clarification. So it has to remain a park or just open space or public space?
That's a good question. I'm not 100% sure of that answer, but I know that if it's something other than a park and possibly open space, I'd have to look at the deed to see what it says. Then a share of the proceeds would have to go back to all the taxing agencies as a result of that.
Okay. Thank you.
So that kind of restricts potentially what can be utilized. But I would agree that what we hear from a lot is it's nice, it's there, but it's roped off. And if you want to call it a park, parks don't have ropes that keep people out. So I mean, that is something, if it is going to be what it is, then let's have it more user-friendly and have it as something that can be occupied and/or even expanded in some elements. When we talk about streetlights, there's been, since the last time they had the Ave unveiling, we have had new streetlights. And I know back then that Kenai Bear and I were very adamant about trying one on Geneveen because of the wind and the element and the abuse that the old ones received that didn't, they weren't durable enough. They didn't hold up. They didn't light up well enough. So we took one and we had it as a test pilot and then to see. And obviously, there were things that we learned from that. So I want to preface with staff, I think that that's critical to do, not just say, "Well, guess what? We're just going to replace them all." I think we really have to be cognizant of what durability, whether it's weather, whether it's wind, some areas are worse than others, and then that light visibility. Because every time we go to a better light, then we have about two years later, people say, "God, the lighting's not good." So I think that's something that needs to be thought of. On the Posey Park, you know, we do have one fountain that is not and has not been functioning. When that concept came in, it was to have two fountains, one on each side. And it was gone back to just one fountain, which was probably a good decision back then. So, you know, I think that's one of those things that, A, it looks undone, just like the arch, undone. Those are the impressions you receive. You drive through underneath the overpass and there's these things sticking here. And nobody, you know, we could probably do a contest in town, what were these supposed to be for? Because I don't know that everybody knows. And they're still wondering. The fountain, I know we've talked about either having it repaired or having it then with landscaping or vegetation. But however, as we change things too, I want us to be mindful of upkeep of the pots. So of the pots, now we have the weeds. So now we have staff individually going to each of those, trying to water them or trying to do this or that. So I want us to be mindful of, beauty also has a cost. And so I think we need to be cognizant of that. And obviously, the way Posey Park is laid out today, in hindsight, obviously, there's some things that need to be modified to that that has it more open and probably has it more visible for people to see as they're driving by or law enforcement. The, I think something, you know, the street sign that Laura talked about going across, I really like that. I think the street sign that we have currently that has been there for a long time, the top part's already been taken off. And the entrance down San Mateo Avenue from El Camino is not ideal in my mind. And I think a sign like that is very becoming and hopefully certainly not as much as the arch was going to cost. But I also think that when we look to vegetation, it's always been a problem with the trees because of the way it is underneath. So then we go into avenues that take up more parking. We try to get seats that maybe skateboarders can use or that maybe people can just lie down on. And I think we need to be cognizant of all those things going forward and the anti-graffiti-type elements. And we do need to make some improvements. So if that means trash cans, and I know there was a group that I had spoken to in our community that wanted to help fund some of those. So I'd like to have us utilize those type of opportunities. And if that means they have a little insignia on that garbage can, I'm good with that. And I think the community would be okay, depending what the insignia is. But if people in the community want to reach out for that, our social groups, I think, service groups, I think that's great. I think the other thing too is, I know we need a plan and you have to have something written. And you have to have some kind of costs and elements and figure out when we get community benefits and dollars are raised, what can we do with what? And I think staff needs to have a prioritized of what's reasonable, what's good, what doesn't get us, if we go down a path of garbage cans or seats, and then we come back a year and we go, "You know what? That wasn't a great call." Because maybe it's not in the bigger overall picture. So I want us to be cognizant to that. But I think also, I think the community, the garbage cans are obviously need to be repaired or replaced. And I think there are small things we can do when the monies are available, but I think we do need a plan. I think there needs to come back from staff a prioritization of what the priorities are for San Mateo Avenue. I think it needs to come back with a timeline of what those would be if those were implemented. Prioritization and timelines for implementation. And I think the trees being larger, I wouldn't disagree with that either, but not vegetation that blocks the business. And the public art idea, Mr. Harmon, that you brought up reminds me back, I'm going way back when I was young, cappuccino high. But we had some folks who did do murals. They were allowed back then. And they were beautiful and they lasted and they weren't vandalized. So there are possibilities. And so I think if we get it more colorful, more inviting, more well-lit, and we have the merchants have the expectation of what their needs and expectations are going into an operation of a business, I think that would be helpful. So those are some of my remarks. Sorry for my voice.
To the chair, can I just get clarification? The priority ranking that was included in the report, is that not acceptable? I know a timeline, I would say, is difficult because it's really about funding.
You're asking me? No. I would agree. If they say, "If money can be done for benches and seating, then that's it." And they come back and say, "We have a community benefit. We have $2 million and we think this is the top priority out of all that that we can do for now." Then that's what I mean by the priorities. Because we're not going to be able, in my mind, to do all of one right away.
So within priority one, he wants to see a little bit of clarification. So.
Understood.
Maybe we'll look at each tier at a time. As good as the process.
Things may change too. They may come back and say, "Guess what? We really can collectively with some new development or downtown, that they can and want to go forward with this item."
Can I ask, to the chair, can I ask another question?
Of course.
Since we're talking about Posey Park and that's all kind of connected to Caltrans, can I continue down San Mateo Avenue going north and get to San Bruno Avenue and San Mateo Avenue? And there's like these two sort of incomplete posts on either side of San Bruno Avenue with bolts sticking out that needed to have an archway go across it. Is that possible that this is part of tier one?
Good question. Hard answer, sort of all contingent upon funding. But addressing those arches and the exposed bolts was not a part of this plan. It really looked at the heart of San Mateo Avenue. I do think that, being here just a little over a year, having heard that probably more times than I can count, figuring out a plan for that, the old plan was scrapped due to cost, over $1 million for the archway. But the bolts are exposed and there could be some public art that goes on either side. Is that a moderate cost or you sort of scrap it, cut the bolts off and design something that doesn't look unfinished or undone? And so I take that comment to heart and we will talk about staff's work plan and figure out where we can fit that in.
Thank you.
And also even, we've talked about a monument sign that we used to have before the Great Sep, which had the Lions or the Rotary or the 4-H, Troop 72, and it had the various organizations that are in the community. So whether that can be modified and arched to that, I don't know. I'm not the expert in that area. But I think that is something else that the community has desired so that people that are driving into our city know, you know, maybe Rotary meets the, you know, the First and the Third or Lions, et cetera. So I think that was another thing. I'm sorry, Val, did you?
Yeah, just a quick comment. It may be possible to get YouTube or some of the larger companies to sponsor some of the walk downtown.
Well, I'm sure the city manager and community development director, Smith, are already thinking that. Any other comments, questions? Okay, this is an action item, resolution.
Motion to approve the resolution of the proposed streetscape plan.
Second.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries 3 to 0 to 2 with Vice Mayor O'Connell and Councilmember Medina recused.
Thank you. And if we can call them back in?
Item 6C, adopt resolution authorizing the Crestmore Canyon wildfire mitigation project in the fiscal year 2019-20, capital improvement budget and appropriating $125,000 from the emergency disaster reserve fund to initiate project planning and environmental clearance processes.
City manager.
Sure. Javon Grogan, city manager, to, to the city council, members of the public. I'm standing up here today to give the city council a presentation about the proposed Crestmore Canyon wildfire mitigation project. Sort of up on the title slide is my name and city attorney Mark Safrano. I'll be giving today's presentation, but Mark is here. And so, together, we've sort of led the development of this project. And so, first off, let's talk about our objectives today. We want the city council to receive information on the proposed Crestmore Canyon wildfire mitigation project. Through tonight's actions, we are asking the city council to adopt a resolution formally authorizing the project in the fiscal year 1920 budget for our capital improvement program. We are also asking the city council to provide an additional allocation of $125,000 from the city's emergency disaster reserve fund to initiate the project planning and environmental clearance processes, some of which have begun. We'll, we'll talk a little bit about that. And so, our agenda for tonight's presentation, it looks long, but it'll be brief. We'll give a quick background overview, or I'll give a quick background overview of the canyon. We'll talk about some recent actions that have been taken to mitigate and address the issue. We'll talk about PG&E and community service hours and the 2010 Crestmore explosion and how that relates to this project. We'll also talk to a request that the city attorney with my assistance made to Judge William Allsepp. We'll, then we'll talk about action by council, and we're open for any questions. So, a little bit about Crestmore Canyon, the community knows a lot, but just by way of background, it is the city's largest open space area. There are approximately 321 homes in the Crestmore and Rollingwood neighborhood that will be immediately affected by a fire in the canyon. But more specifically, there are 137 homes that surround the canyon, a school, as well as both city and school district facilities. The canyon itself is 76.6 acres. It is a heavily wooded area that has trails that are, are used by some people in the community for exploration and hiking. It contains some native trees, mainly Monterey pine, California live oak, but a lot of non-native eucalyptus trees, as is similar in a large parts of the region. Really close proximity to a lot of regional and Arterio Road, Sneef Lane to the north, Skyline Boulevard to the west, San Bruno Ave. to the south, and 280 to the east. And within a quarter mile, actually less than a quarter mile of the canyon is 1,200 acres of open space, Sweeney Ridge, which is identified as a state response area for higher, for higher fire danger. And so, that area faces significant danger. A fire in that area is the responsibility of Cal Fire, but here, Crestmore Canyon is our responsibility. As members in the community will know, during the 2010 PG&E gas pipeline explosion and fire, a small portion of the fire actually spread into the canyon. But thankfully, due to some quick thinking and heroic efforts of our first responders on the scene, that fire was mitigated. And part of the reasons why it was mitigated is that there was some really quick thinking to call in a Cal Fire helicopter to drop fire retardant on the base of the canyon and the surrounding area. And, and that really largely prevented a more significant devastation and loss of life on that night. And so, we know that Crestmore Canyon is a significant fire risk to the city. And actually, later on tonight's agenda, we have a update of the Crestmore Glenview Neighborhood Reconstruction Project. But as a part of that project, the $50 million that the city received from PG&E to rebuild the neighborhood, there was initially a vision to do wildfire mitigation in the canyon and an initial estimate of 1.9 million. Unfortunately, the cost to rebuild the neighborhood was significant, and that project could not be done. But, but even back then, there was significant concerns about fire danger and the desire to have a significant project to clear out some of the underbrush and vegetation. So, what are some of the recent actions that the city council has taken? And so, I wanted to highlight a few because we have been doing what we can within our resources. So, FY 1819, the city applied for and received a $15,000 grant from the California Fire Foundation. And that work was, that grant was received and that work was done, and it cleared a lot of the underbrush around the fire road and provided better access should there be a fire to that fire road. We also applied for, but unfortunately, did not receive a $200,000 Cal Fire Climate Investments Fire Prevention Grant for hazard mitigation and vegetation clearing in the canyon. And at the beginning of this year, July of 2019, the city council approved $37,000 for a city wildfire hazard risk assessment to identify the level of fire risk and potential fire hazards throughout the city and to develop an appropriate ongoing plan for mitigation based on parcel density, road network complexity, distance to fire stations, and environmental elements. And so, that plan is nearly complete, and actually, in the report that you have before you, there's an attachment too that really shows the canyon and really confirms that out of all of our fire risk areas in the city, the canyon is one of the most significant areas, if not the most significant area, certainly the most significant area by landmass and homes surrounding it. In addition, in the current budget, the 1920 budget, even though we had some fiscal challenges and having a balanced budget, the city council directed staff to include 75,000 for vegetation management and fire mitigation work in the canyon. And so, that is currently in the budget. So, what else has staff been working on? We've been working to establish the project that is before you, which we titled the Crestmore Canyon Wildfire Mitigation Project. And we've been developing maps, and we'll show you one really quickly. That calls for up to 100-foot defensible space and vegetation clearance at the 30%, at the 30 feet from, away from structures, and then the remaining 70 feet to get a total of 100 feet. We are working on developing cost estimates and parameters, and the truth of the matter is, this project will be several millions of dollars. And it's not just the one-time money, it's the ongoing maintenance. And so, it is quite a very significant endeavor. And so, we've, we've talked to contractors, and we have some meetings scheduled with Cal Fire because they're doing a lot of vegetation clearing work. We're devising a schedule and a scope of work that will really be reflective of the amount of money that we can get into the project. We can only do what we can afford to do. And we will develop also an estimate for ongoing maintenance. One of the things we know is that should we receive revenue to do significant fire mitigation, we really need to keep that up, and, and that is extremely important. And, you know, if I go back and, and just talk about that $200,000 grant that we applied for but didn't receive, one of the things that we know is true is that it is a significant fire risk to San Bruno. It is not the most significant fire risk in the state of California. And so, our ability to compete for and receive grants for Crestmore Canyon on a statewide basis may be limited, just because of all of the wildfire danger that's going on. There frankly are more significant areas when we look statewide. That doesn't mean that the canyon is not significant. And so, the image that you have before you is a image of the, of the canyon with a few overlays. And so, the first thing you have that I want to point out is a pink border that really shows just order of magnitude what a 30, 30-foot buffer zone is. And what that really is, is a 30-foot buffer zone between structures to create that immediate area of defensible space at what we call the, the residential wildlife interface, so behind the homes and structures that surround the canyon, followed by the remaining 70-feet area where we would attempt to do underbrush clearing, trimming limbs of the trees up to six feet, really that if there is a fire, hopefully to limit the spread of that fire. And then the larger green area throughout the rest of the canyon, subject to funding, we would really hope to do a removal of dead and diseased trees, again, clearing out a lot of the areas that pose fire danger, that will pose access if there is a fire to getting fire personnel and crews in the canyon, not to mention all of the residential complaints we get every year of residents saying, you know, we really should clear out some of the fallen trees. And so, I want to talk now a little bit about PG&E and how that relates to this. And so, as many people in the community know, PG&E was sentenced to probation, was, the company received a criminal conviction for the events surrounding the 2010 pipeline explosion and fire. And the company was sentenced to complete 10,000 hours of community service. And that order said, to every extent possible, focused on the city of San Bruno. And so, not, not really connected initially to this effort. In May of this year, staff working with PG&E learned that PG&E is about halfway done with those 10,000 hours. And since that time, as we sit today, PG&E is about three-quarters of the way done with those 10,000 court-mandated hours, some of which have been done in San Bruno, but a significant portion, approximately 60%, has been completed elsewhere within San Mateo County, some for organizations that serve countywide, so San Bruno, other for organizations that are not directly connected to San Bruno. And so, city staff engaged with PG&E for discussions of creating a community benefit project, really to dedicate those remaining community service hours to the city of San Bruno, really with the goal of providing the city of San Bruno with a significant and a lasting impact and refocusing those remaining community service hours on the really sort of heart of where the devastation occurred. And so, those conversations happened this year, really launching in January of 2019 and concluding just about a month ago with a agreement with PG&E, subject to court approval, that PG&E would dedicate the balance of those community service hours to a significant community benefit project in the city of San Bruno, specifically for the Crestmore Canyon wildfire mitigation project. And so, in October of this year, this month, on October 8th actually, there was a court hearing that was attended by myself, the city manager, the city attorney, Mark Safrano, and the mayor, Rico Medina. And at that court hearing, the city let the judge know of a conceptual proposal that has been agreed to by the city and PG&E whereby those remaining community service hours would be dedicated for this important community benefit project. Again, subject to Judge Allsepp's approval, who is over the probation order and potentially even subject to the PG&E bankruptcy process. And so, that proposal was submitted to Judge Allsepp, and the city would undertake the work. I should actually pause there to say that when we initially had these discussions, the original probation order really called for PG&E to do community service work, and we initially thought that PG&E could do this work directly and undertake the work. What we learned is that PG&E actually contracts out for all of their vegetation management work that they're doing. There, there might even be significant liability issues for the city to have PG&E doing work on city property. And so, the agreement was that the city would, would undertake the work. Some additional details, so when we let the judge know about our conceptual proposal, what the judge really said is, where's the plan? Where's the detailed schedule? Where's the scope of work? What are the cost estimates? And so, city staff are in the process of putting that all together, all together to submit to the judge on November 12th, which is the next status hearing. But it's important to note that if the $3 million is approved, it would, it could only be spent on vegetation management and fire mitigation in the canyon. And, and that really was sort of a clear realization and expression of the judge, really wanted to be sure that that money was spent on work in the canyon and not spent on the planning work and consultants, because any project of this magnitude really takes some real work to get off the ground, and you have to go through the secret process. And the judge really wanted any significant dedication because these were essentially will be converted community service hours to actually go to boots on the ground, if you will. And so, any additional resources would need to come from the city. It is city property. And additionally, it's important to note, I've said it before, but the ongoing maintenance, we would need to find a way to cover. And so, we are preparing for the November 12th hearing, and what we want to, what we have before the city council is a resolution formally establishing the Crestmore Canyon wildfire mitigation project in the 1920 budget year and appropriating 125,000 from the city's emergency disaster reserve fund. I'll pause there to note that the city's emergency disaster reserve fund was set up by $3 million, with $3 million because we face a lot of risks, risk from earthquakes, risk from fire, risk from infrastructure utility failures. And so, one of the questions you may have is, why are we pulling money from our emergency reserve fund to fund a capital project? Important to note that since that project was established with $3 million, by pulling out 125,000, we are actually using the interest earnings that have been accumulated. So, right now, the fund currently has about $3,182,000. And so, important to note, by this, by doing this allocation from the fund, we will not be sort of putting ourselves or the disaster fund at risk. We will essentially be leveraging the interest earnings that that fund has accumulated to begin the planning and environmental clearance work, because should it be approved by the judge, any significant work will need to go through that process. Should the money not be approved by the judge, we will plan for a project with whatever dollars that we can afford. This is city property, and it is, as the fire hazard assessment that we have done and that's included, it is a extreme fire hazard risk that we have. And so, we, we need to plan for it, and this project is part of that. And so, the 125,000 will be combined with the 75,000 that the council allocated for this fiscal year, bringing the total project budget to 200,000. The city is planning some work. Since we did that fire, the, since we spent the 15,000 last fiscal year to clear the access road, the weeds have grown back up, and we need to go in and ensure that we have access, so we're planning a project to do that. But we really would like to leverage the money in this project that would be allocated as initial seed funding to fund a larger project, and we'll go before Judge Allsepp on November 12th with a full plan and scope of work for the project. We are here for any questions? Thank you.
Anything from city attorney? Good, okay. Questions from council? Anything?
I don't have questions, but I just, I mean, I can't express to the public, to staff, how important that I know that the council believes in fire mitigation to the city. We know it's an important piece, and we know it's something that we need to put money towards. As you can see in the presentation, it's something that we've been talking about and putting money towards for the last year. So, the fact that this opportunity came up where volunteer hours really aren't going towards San Bruno is a perfect opportunity for us to actually use real money and to make sure that that money is earmarked for fire mitigation. I can't thank you enough for the work that you've done on this project. Thank you so much, Javon.
Marty?
Yes, I'm also going to echo that service hours are great, but this money will, will save lives. And, and keeping that in focus, and it is something that needs to be done. So, I'm in support of this and moving forward. Thank you.
And I just wanted to say, after the court hearing and also the, our fire chief, Dave Crest, attended, I did, that afternoon spoke to some of the families who lost their loved ones on that night in 2010, to, of course, let them know what had transpired at the court hearing, to let them know before press releases and all of that. And that is a establishment that the former mayor, and I believe, is important to continue so they hear it from us. And those that I wish to discuss the topic were in support of this. They also believe that... They also believe that they, and I think some of my colleagues to the right that were there, is, you know, these volunteer hours were to have been of value and a benefit to the community and to the city of San Bruno. And they went outside that parameter. There was not a report given, but then once it was established and seen truly what was, where it was going, it is okay, and it's important, volunteer work on every level is important. But if it is about cleaning up something, if it's about painting something, these dollars that can be utilized toward that canyon is still something today, that even when I went on Crestmore Drive during the street outage to speak to a couple who live on that side of the canyon are still worried today, and they were there when that explosion happened. So this is something that is really important. I also want to thank staff, because through the manager and fire department, you had a limited time in which to bring back this proposal, we wanted this done to bring back to the judge. And as you know, if you've ever been before a federal judge, which I had not, it's a little unique in the sense that you can't say, I'm sorry, through the chair, I want to question you on that. You just kind of be quiet, you listen, and you get guidance from the judge. I think this is something that will have a great value, that we know is long overdue, that needs to be done. So our objective and goal with the approval of council is to go back to that November 12th and work to have the judge feel peace of mind, as well as the community's interest. I know one thing that he said that I differ with is that, you know, the city benefits, the victims don't. What I would have said, if I could, could have to the judge at that moment, but I wasn't, you're not allowed to talk unless spoken to, was, you know, the city was a victim. The whole city was a victim. Those folks that still worry about that still today, going on almost 10 years later, is a concern and a worry, and these are monies that I think those hours that are remaining will be better spent, better used, and save lives. So for me, I want to, again, thank staff for the short window that you had in which to bring this back, to bring it to council, to get us prepared for the next hearing with the judge. Any other questions or comments?
Through the chair. I just also want to make a comment that staff did coordinate, and we did complete the mitigation for the fire road through the canyon, and that's actually an impressive fire road. I mean, it's not just some little narrow road, I mean, it's pretty good size, and I know that the residents in the area who have seen it, who have visibility to it, has been very appreciative, so thank you for that, because I think that was a huge jumpstart on being able to get accessible vehicles in there to fight fire.
Anything else, council? Anything to add? City manager? All right, this is an action item, resolution.
Motion to approve the resolution, authorizing the funding.
Second. Motion made and seconded.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item.
Item 6D, receive presentation and update on the Crestmore Glenview Fire Neighborhood Reconstruction Project and adopt a resolution authorizing appropriation of $100,000 from the Capital Improvement One-Time Initiative Reserve Fund, Fund 004, to cover the costs associated with Fire Station 52 geotechnical work, and authorizing $490,000 of staff time on reserve in the Emergency Disaster Recovery Fund, Fund 190, for the remaining expenditures in order to complete the project.
Harry and Keith. Harry?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. As you know, I'm Harry Burrows, and I'm the city's project manager for the Crestmore Reconstruction Project. The purpose of the items before you tonight is to provide an update on the status of the reconstruction project, as well as the overall budget and closeout of the trust. We were here before you about a year ago with, at that time, wasn't the best news, we were projecting a budget that exceeded the $50 million by about $1.4 million. We have much better news for you tonight, generally, and that is that that has been reduced, that overage has shrunk to what we're estimating now to be just shy of $600,000. So we've got three items on the agenda this evening before the city council. This presentation will cover all three of those, and in summary, they are the overall project summary update and budget update, the closeout of the Earl Glenview Park Project, and an update on the Phase 4 project status, as well as a request for a partial release of retention to the contractor on that project, who is Granite Rock Construction Company. As background, I will provide a brief overview of the trust components and expenditures, a summary of the individual reconstruction projects, and a discussion of the remaining items to complete and closeout the overall project. I'm going to then turn the presentation over to Keith DiMartini, the finance director, to discuss strategies to cover this budget shortfall I described, and an appropriations So the expenditures against the $50 million trust have been historically tracked in eight different categories. For simplicity, we've condensed those here to show just the primary items, and these include the reconstruction and maintenance costs, which make up a bulk of the budget, staff time, professional services related to federal and state proceedings, and those were the CPUC and the NTSB proceedings. And then the remainder are grouped in a category here that I've labeled administrative and other costs. And those include costs such as items directly related to the trust and the trustee, cost related to support of the residents immediately after the fire and explosion, including counseling and outreach, and a large portion of that is also includes a waiver of fees, mostly building fees, that were required as part of the home rebuilding, for homes that were burned down or destroyed or damaged in the explosion fire. The main takeaway, I think, from this slide, however, is the top item, and, you know, it's 70%, almost 70% of the $50 million has been, or will have been, spent on actual improvements, or costs related to construction, those improvements within the neighborhood. So there have been nine separate construction projects as part of the overall neighborhood reconstruction, and all but one of these have now been completed. What I'd like to do is just real briefly, and I won't go into a lot of detail, but I'd like to just real briefly describe each of these projects. The first was the Crestmore Canyon slope and retaining wall reconstruction, and this was in the aftermath of the fire, and Jovan's previous presentation, you know, touched on this a little bit. This is the upper portion of the canyon that suffered the fire as part of the explosion, and so this work involved reconstruction of the new, reconstruction and new retaining walls adjacent to the homes that abut the canyon, as well as a slope erosion control and stabilization project that is shown here. The Phase 1 water and sewer projects replaced and upsized critical infrastructure that serves the neighborhood. The Phase 2 and 3 utility replacement project completely replaced all of the underground sewer, water, and storm drain within the neighborhood. The Upper Sanitary Sewer Lateral Replacement Project replaced over 325 sewer laterals, mostly orangeberg pipe that was failing within the neighborhood, and this greatly helped to reduce infiltration and inflow within the city sewer system. The Earl Glenview Park Project replaced a former totlot that was at the mouth or the top of the canyon with a new modern park complex that's now a centerpiece of the neighborhood. And then the Crestmore Canyon replanting, this goes back to the earlier slide where you saw the devastation of the canyon. It was originally envisioned and described early on as a reforestation project within the canyon. There used to be, many of you may remember, a very dense eucalyptus grove in this portion of the canyon. However, after the fire and the slopes were repaired, over the years, native ground species, ground cover and trees have regrown on the slopes, so therefore the scope of this project was reduced to the construction of a new decorative fence that delineates the top of the canyon, as well as some native planting, planting of native live oak trees along the top of the canyon. And then the last project, which we're trying to finish up, is the Phase 4 Street Improvement Project. This project has included the replacement and removal and replacement of all concrete curb garden sidewalk, new decorative LED streetlight system to replace the old unreliable RO regulator and output system, reconstruction and repaving of all the streets, including the installation of a new subdrain system beneath the new roadway. As I said, this project's nearing completion, and I'll discuss the remaining items that are needed to complete it here in just a moment. But first, I want to discuss the closeout of the Earl Glenview Park. So as many of you will remember, this project was constructed mostly during the year of 2018, and we had a ribbon cutting and grand opening of the park last October. There was additional work that was completed throughout the beginning of this year, including punch list and maintenance items on the park, and that was completed in early summer. The project involved seven change orders, which are described in great detail in the staff report, and I'm not going to go into those here tonight, but I did want to touch upon two of those that are of particular note, because they represent work that was not originally envisioned as part of the original park project. So as you can see, the bottom two photos here on this slide represent those two projects, and one is what the project I just described, which is the Crestmore Canyon Landscape, which was originally envisioned as a much larger standalone project. However, after the scope was reduced, we decided that for expediency purposes and for cost savings, to add it to the park project, as, so not to go out with a separate construction contract. Similarly, at the end of Concord Way, which is the photo on the right, there was a dilapidated chain link fence, as well as the concrete wall that's shown there was cracked and damaged. So we undertook that project as well, and added it to the park project instead of adding it to the Phase 4 project. It made more sense since fence work was included in the landscape project to do that work with part of the park project. So these two change orders actually helped push the overall budget above the total authorized construction budget by an amount of $26,090, which is shown here on the slide. In addition to the construction budget increase, the project designer, Mig, incurred additional fees related to the various change orders and construction coordination, and they have exceeded their budget, their total contract was 118,000, shown here on the slide, and they've exceeded their budget by $6,400. So tonight, we're requesting that the city council authorize amendments to both of these contracts in the amount shown here, in order to close out the park project. In addition, we're requesting that the project be accepted as complete, and that final, such that final payments can be made, and a notice of completion be filed with San Mateo County. Moving on to the Phase 4 project, as I stated earlier, this project is essentially complete, 99% of the contract work, the original contract work, is completed. Final items remaining include some punch list items, and this involves mostly interface with private properties, things that the contractor still has to do at the interface between the back of the new sidewalk and the existing homes and yards. There are some repairs of pavement in several locations that need to be done, that was caused by subbase failures. Without getting too technical, that's the area beneath our new roadway that was put in, we had some soft spots that weren't identified during construction, and the roadway failed after the roads were paved. We also have some adjustments to some concrete walkways that need to be made, where the new sidewalk is slightly higher than the adjacent walkways, and in order to get rid of tripping hazards, we need to go back and fix those items. We also have some intersection striping revisions, and the final cleanup of the yard that's been up there for many, many projects, when you drive down Glenview, that, we need to get that yard cleaned up. So those are the remaining construction items within the project, most of them are change orders, there's very little of this work here is contract work, only the project cleanup, the final cleanup of the yard remains as final contract work. So there's additional work as part of the overall project closeout that still needs to be done, and then those are listed here, they include the preparation of final record drawings or as-bills for the project, those are currently underway. There's also the preparation of a street monument record of survey that is being done. We, as part of the project reconstructing the road, had to remove all of the street monuments, they had to be replaced, and when they get replaced, it's a requirement of the subdivision map act that a record of survey be performed and filed with the county. That record of survey has been completed and is awaiting recordation at the county. And we also have final project archiving and documentation, which is ongoing as well. So we currently expect that all of the construction in the field will be done in early December. We had hoped, and I believe the staff report notes that by mid-November, however, we just talked with our contractor in the last day or so, and the repaving work is now not scheduled until November 18th through 20th. So that, that work still remains. So as part of the Phase 4 project closeout, the contractor, Granite Rock Construction Company, has a request to get paid, partial, to get paid for a part of his retention that the city's withheld from the contract. So on these construction projects, the city typically withholds 5% of every progress payment that gets paid to the contractor, and the purpose of that is, as the project is constructed, you retain that money in case the contractor fails to perform some of the contract work. As the work is completed and you pay it out, there's less need to have that retention. In fact, the previous, public contract code in previous years allowed for reduction in retention, that when it used to be 10%, you could reduce it down to 5%. It's now 5%. The contractor has requested that the retention be reduced on this project for several different reasons, including this project has been a lengthy project, much longer than he anticipated, or they anticipated, they've got subcontractors that they need to get paid, and they'd like to get those subcontractors paid. We've looked at, staff has looked at, the remaining work, particularly contract work that is left to be performed, we think that the liability to the city is less than $50,000, and we're holding $500,000 plus in retention. So we think that the release of retention, at least partial release of retention to $250,000 is reasonable, and we are recommending that. And then circling back to the overall trust budget, this is a chart that you may be familiar with, have seen before, this, the categories on the left are the detailed categories that are shown on the city's website when the city updates the trust reimbursements. So two categories of expenses are remaining, and they are the reconstruction and maintenance cost item, as well as the PG&E trust and trustee cost, and they total a little over $1.15 million. The remaining budget includes some costs, so that $1.1 million, $1,96,000, shown there in the middle of the chart, those costs include some items that have already been paid, but have not been submitted for reimbursement to the trust. So that, that's why that number might seem a little bit higher than some of the other numbers that you see in your staff report, it's, we want to make sure we're not double counting and things get put in the right place, in terms of accounting. These costs also include several contingencies. One, we've got, as I described, some construction items remaining, I want to make sure that we have a contingency, an appropriate contingency on those, in case we run into problems in the field with the paving, for example, we have to tear up the streets and do some digouts there, if, for example, the areas of subbase failure are larger than we had anticipated, I'd like to have some contingency in there as well. The other minor contingency that we have placed in these numbers include a contingency for any potential claims from residents that we may have to settle with. So, so those are two contingencies that are included in these numbers, but even with those contingencies, again, we're projecting a total budget shortfall of about $590,000 when we were looking at almost $1.4 million a year ago. So at this point, I'd like to- So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Keith to discuss a strategy to cover the budget shortfall, as well as a request for appropriation.
Finance Director.
Thank you, Harry. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Keith Martini. I'm the city's finance director. And as Harry mentioned, I want to go over what the city, what staff's strategies are to address the budget shortfall that staff have already presented regarding this project. And so before I go into the details of how staff are recommending addressing the budget shortfall, I will say that the recommendations before you this evening are consistent with the presentation that both Harry and I made about a year ago with what the budget shortfall was projected to be. As Harry mentioned, it was approximately $1.4 million projected about a year ago. Now it's being projected at much less, at $590,000. The strategies are the same, but we will not have to utilize the third option that was presented about a year ago, which was dipping into the emergency disaster reserve fund that the city manager talked about in the prior item before you this evening. We are not having to do that, which is a very good thing. And so let me go over the strategies that we are recommending before you this evening. At a high level, the total budget for this project was $50 million, and we are projecting to come in at $50,590,000, so exceeding the budget by $590,000 in total. There are two recommendations to balance the budget. First is utilizing the city's general fund reserve fund for capital related to Fire Station 52. And the second is to utilize staff costs that were already reimbursed that are currently on reserve. And so I'll go over both of those in detail on the next slide. So first, the first item before you that staff is recommending is to utilize the city's general fund, Capital Improvements Reserve Fund. That's our Fund 004. And that's the fund that a significant amount of capital projects, how they're implemented is using that fund. There currently is a capital improvement project related to the rebuild of Fire Station 52. That's currently in the approved CIP budget. It does have a carryforward appropriation of $1 million. There was work done as part of this rebuild project that is directly attributable to the Fire Station 52 rebuild project, such as various consulting costs, geotechnical studies, specific work for that project. So it is appropriate for those costs to be transferred from the rebuild project to the Fire Station 52 project. So it would be transferring those expenses from one project to the other. The second option, the second recommended, the recommended budget solution is to utilize the staff costs that have already been reimbursed from the trustee to pay the cost overrun. City Council did take an action a number of years ago, which was a very fiscally conservative action, to put $722,000 of staff costs that were reimbursed from the trustee on reserve in this emergency disaster recovery fund. That cash sits in the fund on reserve. It cannot be used without an action in the City Council. So staff is before you requesting to use the remaining $490,000 to cover the budget shortfall that's required. And then once the project, once the project is fully complete, once all the expenses have been incurred, once all the reconciliation work has been done, staff will do one final review and reconciling, reconciliation of the entire, of the entire fund, make sure that any remaining costs have been fully addressed, and then close down the fund and the capital and project to have the project be 100% complete. It's also important to note that there really is no, there is no use of the city's general fund in any of these budget solutions. The $100,000 on item number one, that's money that has already been provided from PG&E. And the second item as well are funds that were, that were, that were provided to the city from PG&E as well. So there is no specific general fund from the city that would be used or leveraged for executing both of these budget solutions. So I would just like to reiterate the requests that are, that are before the City Council this evening. First, please receive the presentation and update on the Crestmore Glenview Fire Neighborhood Reconstruction Project and adopt a resolution authorizing the appropriation of $100,000 from the Capital Improvement One-Time Initiative Reserve Fund to cover the costs associated with Fire Station 52, and also authorizing $490,000 of staff time on reserve in the Emergency Disaster Recovery Fund for the remaining expenditures in order to complete the project. Number two, please adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract amendment with Elite Landscape Construction in the amount of $26,090 for the completion of the construction for the Earl Glenview Park, and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract amendment with MIG Incorporated for the amount of $6,400 for the final design services for the Earl Glenview Park, and accept the Earl Glenview Park as complete and authorize the filing of notice of completion with the San Mateo County Recorder's Office. And then number three, please adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to release $250,000 of project retention to Granite Rock Construction for the Crestmore Neighborhood Reconstruction Phase Four Street Improvement Project. That concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you both, to Harry and Keith, for your presentations. Questions from council? And we can take them all, all together, all these items, as far as any questions? Any questions from council at this time? Okay.
We will need to have three votes, though, for each of the resolutions.
Yes, any speaker cards?
We have no speaker cards.
No, thank you.
Yes, it's been a long time. I worked with Harry when I was an employee here on this project, and that's how long that was. And I'm sure all the residents and pretty much everybody in San Bruno wants to know that this project is said and done, and we can continue on with our lives. But I am concerned, a few things. The first couple ones with the cost of the design, I'm fine with that. That's all good for me. I'm concerned about the retention, release, and having a final date when this project is done. Because I know in construction, things kind of get moved around, and we are doing them a big favor, and I'm being extremely just in releasing $250,000, but I understand that. Just that I'm concerned that they'll get that money, and then they'll schedule it for November 18th, and the project will slip. And now we're talking about January. Well, you're not going to be likely paving in January. I haven't checked my farmer's almanac this year, so I couldn't tell you about that. But just schedule slippage and getting a clear, we need you to be done with this job. We're giving you a big favor of giving you a quarter of a million dollars that we don't legally need to do, but we, I feel that we should have some additional assurances that we're going to get this job done this year. That's my first comment. The second is, what is the final pavement going to look like? Because I know a lot of people don't like to see, nobody wants to see a paved street, and then here's a patch that doesn't match it. So is there going to be some slurry on a certain section? How many locations do we have to repair? Just so that we have something that everybody could just say, wow, they're done. It looks, it looks great. We've got a new street. We paved for a new street. We don't, we don't, we don't want patchwork, but things happen in construction. So those are my comments for now.
Thank you. Does staff want to respond, or you want me to get more comments from?
We'll respond. I'll have Harry do the beginning part.
Sure. Yeah, let me, let me answer both of those questions as I can. So in regards to the retention, yes, you're correct. Legally, we don't have an obligation to release that to them at this point in time because there's nothing in the public contract code that requires us to do so or in the city's municipal code. However, given that the amount of retention that has been withheld is for contract work, unfortunately, the work, the pavement repair work is not contract work. It's change order work because of the subbase failure. So it's a change in conditions technically in the project. But let me also say that we've had multiple meetings and discussions with Granite Rock. Granite Rock wants to be complete with this project as much as we want them to be complete with this project, and we all want to complete this project. They are a very large contractor. The amount of work remaining for the pavement repairs is about $60,000. This is not an excuse for them, but what we've been told is they are busy and have been busy on other very large projects, including the airport runway repaving and 280 and 101 projects down in South Bay. They are trying to squeeze us in. We've looked at weekends work. We typically don't like to do weekend work in the neighborhood, but given, as you pointed out, Councilmember Medina, it's the end of the year, we're getting in the rainy season, we're trying to pull every rabbit we can to get this work done. They've given us this, the schedule of the 18th through the 20th. We, again, have reiterated, can you find a weekend between now and then? We're waiting for a response back from them on that.
And I'll just add that the bulk of the contract work was done over a year ago, and I would say that sort of the reason for the delay is on a little bit of the city's part and their part. I mean, as Harry mentioned, they were, they did have contracts to repave the runways at SFO, and we, our project admittedly took a backseat to that. Now, there had been prior, prior delays on our side, too. And so we know that the remaining work is a lot less than $250,000, so we will be still holding significant retention. But right now, holding half, over half a million dollars of retention, given all the, all the delays that really can be shared on both sides. We've had a lot of discussions with them and came to this resolution where by releasing this, it allows them to pay their subcontractors out of the pot of money, and we're still holding significant funds to get the work done and ensure that the work is done. So we are confident that the work will get done. You know, can I sit here and promise you that if scheduled for mid-November, it will absolutely happen in mid-November? No, I don't want to do that because I know how these things work. But as Harry said, we are all committed to sort of see this be done as soon as possible.
Other questions or comments? Michael?
Laura?
Through the chair. So the city manager made the comment that possibly some of the delays could have been on the city's part, and so I'm, I'm wondering, are there any obstacles yet remaining to complete the work? Have we removed, are we like absolutely ready to let them come in and do their thing? No more excuses for delays?
We are. We're ready, and final directions have been given, so we are ready.
Okay. And what's the expected duration of the remaining work?
So again, the, the primary work is going to be the paving work. The actual duration of that paving work will be three days. It's be a little bit disruptive to some of the neighbors adjacent to the work, but not disruptive to the overall neighborhood. The concrete work is actually ongoing, the walkway work. They've completed three of those, and they've got another 12 to finish. So the goal is that they will have all of those concrete walkways done by the time we get the paving work done.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, if I may, I failed to answer one of Councilmember Medina's questions related to the patch.
Yeah, three days of paving. Sorry.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, the, we're not planning to do any sort of slurry seal on top of it. We are doing a cutout, and we're going to overgrind so that we have a good patch. The roadway was just paved last year. We believe that, you know, a slurry seal isn't necessary.
Laura, then, Ibra?
It's, it's, this is a tough project because there's so much that went on and went on for so long. I guess what I want, I'd like to see is staff to really have an honest conversation about this project. I know that from the resident perception of the Crestmore Neighborhood rebuild, it was a frustrating process. Residents were not communicated with, they were not responded to. Things were scheduled outside of times that, hey, we're going to be doing this next week, and next week comes and goes, and then two weeks later, we're doing something. It went on for far too long, but I also understand the uniqueness of this project, and I understand that this has never happened to us, and I understand the complexity of a lot that was done. There were promises that never were followed through with. There was promises for some sort of special brickwork in the, in the intersections, and then it becomes some sort of painted paved, painted intersections. I have friends that live in the neighborhood, and I drove through it a number of times and saw a lot of stuff that were pointed out that was, they were 100% right. When you have a 70-year-old resident who's gone out and sweeping up his own gravel left behind, behind, by somebody who was paving that day before, and they're needing to feel like they can safely walk on the street or on the sidewalk, it wasn't good. And so I, I think I've been frustrated, and I think a lot of other members of the council have been frustrated with this project. But I, at the other side, there was so much that had to be done, and your pictures sort of show a lot of the work that had to be done. And in any one project, it didn't always go 100% perfect. So I know that a lot of things had happened. You've got a resident where you've got a brand-new sidewalk, and then you chip part of their pathway, and unforeseeable things. I just want to make sure we move forward, and we always can learn from our mistakes, right? We're not all perfect. But is there anything that we can do and a better process in making sure we get back to residents in time? Making sure residents can feel like their issues are getting addressed, or, you know, some tickler file, or something that they can see online, that they can go to and know, I have that same complaint, let's put it out there. I think we need to look, and let's hope this never, ever happens again, but there are always going to be things that are kind of big in scale that we get a lot of resident input. You can question 100 residents in this room, and you're going to have, you know, 75 that are totally happy, and 25 that are going to fill the room with a lot of their complaints, and you can never make them happy. And so I know you had to listen to a lot of that, Mr. Burrows, and I thank you for doing what you can do. I thank staff for all the work that they had to do on this project. I questioned a long time ago with the sloped, or the slurry that, or the paving that was starting to slope, and saw that firsthand. Unforeseeable, something you cannot prevent. It's, you can't, when the earth undermines, it is, it is part of nature, and that is something that happens, and it's, you know, you wish it's preventable, but I know that there's not much you can do for it. If you really think about the project and the costs of this project and the number that we came over, I guess, wow, right? I mean, that's, what percentage is that? I don't know, Keith, do you know that?
1%.
Right? So, you know, in a lot of ways, that's outstanding work, right? So I know there's been a lot of struggles. I think, like all of us, we just want to get it done. We want it, we want to just put it and can say that this is 100% done. So with all of that, thank you to staff, everybody, but let's figure out how we can learn from this and make sure that the same mistakes we don't make going forward, and that we can always be better than the way we were before. Well, thank you.
Well said. Thank you. With that in mind, are you notifying the neighbors that will be affected? And so, because we don't want to hear from them, trust me.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so how? Are you knocking on their door, or you're going to?
We put flyers, hand-delivered flyers to them, and then most of the neighbors that are affected, after being up in the neighborhood for eight years, we know a lot of them fairly personal.
I was going to say.
So, yeah, we, where we have emails and phone numbers, we call them as well.
Okay. Because, because none of us up here want to hear anything that happened, or they didn't know, or any of those things. And I agree with Laura, there are, there are always lessons to be learned, and I don't know if there's a formal mythology that you might follow, or a debriefing, or however you do it, but I, I think it would be beneficial, not just to us, but to any other city that has to go through this kind of thing. So sometime in the future, I know now is not it, but sometime in the future, maybe we can get that done.
I would say the big lesson is beware of change orders.
Echoing some of my colleagues as well, you know, I think if this passes the resolutions that the whole neighborhood up there somehow needs to be notified of where we're at, what we have left, what the projected timeline is. I know it can't be in concrete. I know it can't be in concrete. Things happen, it could rain that, those days. But I want them all to know, and I do know that not everybody, as was indicated, is going to be happy. There are still outstanding items of a driveway or a walkway, and those will have to be done on one-on-one basis, but this needs to be, as we come up on another anniversary next year, of the remembrance of what happened. It needs to be closed, we need to move forward, we need to move on. But I think it is critical, because there's a lot of documentation of things from when it happened, and the outside agencies, to the NTSB hearings, to dealing with PG&E, evacuating both areas, bringing them all back in, 300-plus from Skyline College on one day. And I think those things need to be noted somewhere. It's not to say that we want to see this again. Nobody here does in this community. But at the same time, too, there are things that have been learned that we can improve upon, or God help us if we ever have a situation that arrives, we have a resource. We have something that can assist us, because the next disaster may not be where we have 400 firefighters and 200 police officers. We may be on our own for a little bit, and we need to have those tools and those lessons learned and those resources that we have. So, I would hope that we do reach out to the entire neighborhood. I know there are specific issues, which I believe you are, folks are reaching out to those individuals that have outstanding concerns, but that the neighborhood knows, that it's not only just on the website, but we've done that. I think what a commitment was made by the council back then was that we would be with you, and I'll use Jim Ruane's, "Hold your hand if need be and be there every step of the way." And I think we've tried to do that, not perfect, and again, no one's ever gone through this. It was really redeveloping a whole neighborhood in this community. Unprecedented what we dealt with, and the aftermath. So, I just want extra communication. I want people to be aware, and I don't want to hear that all of a sudden, they didn't know about November, that the time, because that was another concern, is wasn't told, would have moved my car, would have done this, would have done that. So, as I'm hopeful, and I know hope isn't a plan, but let's make a plan that gets us to the finish line, but gets us that extra communication that ensures that the neighborhood knows where we are, how we're going to end it, and how we're going to conclude it. And I want us all to be on the same page, and I want us to have, beyond the communication level that we think is okay, like just the website. I don't have the answer, but I'm looking to staff for something, because I think it's critical that, you know, this neighborhood went through a lot, and every remembrance that I've gone to, they come forward, and they remember each other, they remember those that have been lost, but the resilience and the courage of that neighborhood, and what they've endured and the frustration, I want to know when it's concluded, not remembering, and I don't mean that in the conclusion, but this project, that we do it right. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so what we do have is we have a few resolutions. Did you have?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a few resolutions. I know each of them have been read into the record. Thank you, Melissa, and thank you, Keith. Are we able, just to confirm, I know with the clerk we can, can we just take them all together? Since they've all been read into the record.
We should do separate motions for each resolution.
Yeah, there are three resolutions in your packet.
So, you want us to keep each separate?
Each separate, just for the record.
Okay. So, let's move on to, let's go to D. We're going to adopt the, there's action to adopt the first resolution, which is the $100,000 and the $490,000 for staff time. And just before we take motion, I do want to thank council for the $722,000, for the council that made that decision back then, which was not to put it back in the general fund. Staff time had been paid for by the community, by our budget, and it was by action of this council, and the prior council was to say, "Let's put it off to the side in case there are some shortfalls. We want to have that in reserve." Same thing that we did for $3 million that we put back into the streets throughout this community for staff time. So, it was wise decisions prior councils and current councils made to make sure that it just didn't go somewhere. It was spent for the benefit of the community and the shortfall that the finance director, so we're not taking down general funds. So, with that, action on D.
To the chair.
Yes.
I'll introduce resolution authorizing the release of the $250,000 for project retention.
Are you starting from the bottom?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Number one.
D.
So, I'd like to introduce resolution for appropriating $100,000 from the capital improvement for one-time initiative to reserve funds to cover the costs associated with the Fire Station 52, and authorizing $490,000 of staff time to reserve the Emergency Disaster Recovery Fund for the remaining expenditures.
Second.
There's a motion made second. Melissa?
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we'll go to item E. There are three bullet points for adoption of a resolution in the action.
I'll take it, authorizing the city, I'd like to move that we authorize the city manager to execute a contract amendment with Elite Landscape Construction in the amount of $26,090 for the completion of construction for the Earl Glenview Park. And...
So, I think...
Keep going, keep going, two more bullets.
Okay. You want them all? Authorize the city manager to execute a contract amendment with MIG, et cetera, and accept the Earl Glenview Park as complete and authorizing the filing of notice of completion with the San Mateo County Recorder's Office.
Second.
Motion second. Melissa?
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F, resolution.
To the chair. I'd like to introduce resolution authorizing the city manager to release the $250,000 for the project retention to Granite Rock Construction.
Second. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. Now, we'll move on to comments from council members.
I have some comments.
Michael?
No comments.
Irene?
Oh, thank you. So, I've been walking around a lot, and I have visited Fleetwood Drive, Susan Drive, and Oakmont, and they are newly, or relatively newly paved. There's not a pothole on any of them. They have the fog striping, they have the double yellow line down the middle, they have the 25 mile an hour speed limit painted on the pavement, they have the little flashy lights that say you're going too fast or going too slow. It's all very great. We did a great job. Unfortunately, because there are no potholes and because of all those things, people zoom up and down those, all three of those streets, and probably more, but those three streets, because they're long and they have those nice little inclines and all that. So, as I was walking, I know it's hard to judge a car's speed as you're standing there, but I swear to you, those people were going way more than 25 miles an hour. So, I would like to request that we revisit how to mitigate some of that speeding on those three, particularly those three streets. And I'll leave it up to staff to figure it out.
Noted, and staff will get back to you.
Thank you.
Laura? Marty?
Yes, I've got three things. It is that time of the month for the American Legion Monthly Breakfast for this Saturday, 8:30 to 11:30. Get there early. It's a great time. I also want to thank council members Davis and Salazar for holding the community event this past weekend. I think it was an excellent idea. However, I suggest we take that step, that idea, one step further and have open town halls, so all council members could hear the concerns at the same time. The last thing is, there's been a lot of earthquakes, and I think it's fair warnings that we all should be more prepared. I know in my household, I keep on thinking, "I'm going to go get that bag and get everything that I need to be prepared," but it's just those hours don't come up. So, I urge everybody to join me, you know, and just make yourself, go ahead and do it. If you go to the city's website and you enter earthquake, you'll see plenty of links of all kinds of things that you should be doing, so let's be a little bit more prepared. Thank you.
For me, just a couple things. First, on Marty's comment on the earthquakes, and you are right on the preparedness. There was a CERT graduation Saturday, which I attended, so I want to thank those that participated in that, which, again, was rescue and preparedness, and those classes are available through the FIRE, but there was a graduation from CERT, and a lot of good individuals had some really good questions, thoughts, which I sat with them for a while during their lunch, and then handed out their certificates with the FIRE at the end. Also, there was a car show last weekend, and the only reason I'm bringing it up is it was held at St. Roberts, but it was not a St. Roberts car show. And the reason I bring that up is because it was for two gentlemen who unfortunately lost their lives at the intersection of El Camino and Sneath Lane, going back to a celebration from a christening, is my understanding, and they lost their lives. And so, it evolved to where it became a softball tournament, and then somehow it evolved into a car show, and, you know, you always adapt to things. And then, there was a gentleman, Alex Rolater, who was instrumental in founding that and having that car show. And I remember even seeing at City Hall, 5 o'clock on a Friday, trying to get the last permit over down at Bel Air Field, and he unfortunately passed away, and they've continued that. And the reason I bring it up is because you have Mrs. Rolater, who was there, Alex's mom, who did the 50-50, and as she said, just by being there, you're a winner. But truly, that event, it was sponsored by the St. Roberts Men's Club, but truly, that event was of volunteers of friends, family, and community. And that's why I point that out. I think it was very impressive to me that from, I know when I arrived at 3 till, it was getting a little cold, but after 9, people that are in this audience were there, and it's just the community that came out to do something, and now this fund, which supported those two gentlemen's children, now is funding other people that are in need in this community. And so, that truly is about giving back, paying it forward, and about what I believe the city with the heart, the city of San Bruno is all about. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that, because it was a good event for all.
I forgot to make an announcement that I want to say.
Please, of course.
Just a reminder that as a community preparedness council liaison, I'd like to remind everybody who is not already registered with smcialert.org, that it is really important to be part of that, to receive any type of traffic alerts or hazards that you want to stay away from and be alert of any type of situation. So, smcialert.org, and I encourage my council members team to also share that message across to other social media platforms to get the word out, because the more we're informed, the better we can be safe.
So, I think after tonight, we take away preparedness.
Yes.
Be prepared. Okay. Thank you all. Thank you, staff. With that, we'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting, which will be held right here, November 12th at 7 o'clock at the San Bruno Senior Center. Meeting adjourned.